The Elbowboro School Committee has called to order, please rise and join the committee in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please note the meeting is being electronically recorded. The first item on our agenda tonight is an extension from a visit by Principal Zinni in our previous meeting where some concerns related to Thatcher Elementary School were expressed. At the time, Mrs. Zinni articulated what she asserted were three individual concerns, although I think both in the discussion that night and certainly in my conversations with the superintendent since that time, it seems to me that what was labeled concern number two is really an outgrowth of concern number one. And I think that the committee was interested to hearing the administration's response with regard to the totality of the concerns expressed, and perhaps some context and background that would be important for the committee to hear, and certainly I think would be of interest to the Thatcher community. So, Mr. Sheehan, who is here despite a slight injury that we certainly would like to hear about, but maybe at a later time, and if, Mr. Sheehan, if you could share the background information that's been done since that time, we would appreciate it.
The five central office administrators the day after had a meeting with Mrs. Zinni to clarify some points that she had made in the open forum the night before. And as we know, the issues were around transportation, the breakfast program, and special education planning for various programs. In the transportation issues, she stated that, in fact, buses were dropping off students 10 to 30 minutes late. That affected tardiness in access to some services. Well, the reality is, that's true, but the, I think in the context that she said it, Principal Zinni made it sound as if this was taking place all year long, or was taking place within the last week or two, and that's absolutely not true. The bottom line is that earlier in the year, when we were doing transportation runs, et cetera, there were occasions in which kids were going to get into school 10 minutes late or whatever. And we're looking at, if you recall, later on in, I believe toward the end of October, we in fact added another bus run to alleviate some of those concerns. So, that, it's not a global issue that was going on throughout the course of the entire year. And I certainly understand where she's coming from, that, you know, kids coming into school late, the kids going to classes later, et cetera. And so, although I understand where she's coming from, the bottom line is she made it sound like it was more global than it actually was, and it took place earlier in the year as opposed to later in the year. One thing that did take place within the last couple of weeks was, in fact, we run our transition programs where our fourth graders go to the middle schools as fifth grade students, and they transition in a program, and one of our buses broke down. And so, it was going to be an hour and a half later in order to get transportation to the school to do that. So, we actually contacted the school and asked Mrs. Zinni, in fact, "Do you want to postpone this and do it another day? Or can we recognize the fact that the buses are going to be considerably late for this program? Do you still want to have it today?" And she said, "Yes." Well, you know, don't bring this-
Yes, have it today.
Yes, have it today, although it was going to be an hour and a half later than what was expected, and adjust accordingly. You know, there are some things with aging fleets, as you all know, you don't control, you know, when buses break down. And that's what we've been trying to deal with throughout the course of the school year. The other piece where buses are coming to school late, et cetera, and some of this took place during the wintertime, and that was when the buses do come late, principals have to make determinations as to how does that affect going to class the first period in the morning, or what do we do? So, in that realm, you know, Mrs. Zinni said that there is 20 to 30 kids that currently are in the breakfast program, but 190 kids, in fact, qualify for the breakfast program. Well, my point to Catherine was, so what is the building principal doing with regard to that? Where, what are you doing for more kids to be able to do that? And that can be either in scheduling, or that can be working with the transportation company, or whatever that case may be. I understand, and there isn't anybody in this room or this community that doesn't value the idea that kids start school with breakfast. But, we also have other concerns with the breakfast program, because we do have kids that qualify for not just a free or reduced payment for breakfast, but a hot breakfast, and that doesn't mean that you do a grab and go and it's a cold breakfast. So, when you change that format, as took place not just at Thatcher with Mrs. Zinni, but at another school as well, when you change that program, you in fact violate those kids' rights to have a free and reduced hot breakfast. But at the same time, I understand that she wanted to make sure the kids had a breakfast, and maybe more kids would in fact opt for that breakfast. But we need to do both, not exclude one, and not exclude the kids going into the cafeteria to be able to have breakfast. One of Mrs. Zinni's concerns also was that the cafeteria, the route to the cafeteria and from the buses were too far away. That's a building concern, that's a logistics principle concern as to how do you reroute that? How do you do some of those logistic things in order to accommodate feeding as many kids as possible? That's building management things, not central office things. Although, my understanding of what she tried to do as far as the amount of kids who do qualify, who's not eating, or taking advantage of the program, it's commendable. But, there are things in our control, and there are things that are not in our control, and there are things that are directly in the principal's controls.
Right.
And that's what the public need to know as well.
And I appreciate that clarification, and so, and I certainly want to invite committee members to ask questions about these issues that have been discussed thus far. We're moving on to the special education ones momentarily. But, I don't want anyone in the community to get the impression that, because there may be some disagreement as to whether or not the issues that were articulated are representative of issues that are happening on a systemic basis, that somehow we conclude from that that there were no, that there are or were no issues related to transportation efficiency.
There are.
There are, we're working on them, we've been working on them aggressively, we'll continue to do so. I don't know, and I don't think anyone on this committee is in a position to know with 100% certainty exactly how accurate the report was, but, you know, the reality is, there's always a concern there, because if somebody tells us that any kid is not getting there at the time that he or she should, then, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed. It sounds to me that this is, as it has been, on the radar of the central administration, and particularly if, even if it wasn't a 100% accurate depiction, that these are concerns that we're going to be cognizant of going forward. Is that a fair statement?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the committee related to the transportation and breakfast components, which again, I'm frankly a little hesitant to link or to separate the two, because they seem to be inextricably linked? But, are there any questions or comments related to that? Mr. Withers?
So, is there a plan in place now, or is there a process being worked out as to how to ensure that these children that are eligible for lunch, I'm sorry, excuse me, breakfast in the morning are able to receive it?
The very first plan, so let me answer your question in maybe a slightly different way. As the issues are tied together, we're dealing with the root of the problem or issue, and that is the transportation piece, getting the kids there in a timely manner by which they can avail themselves of a free and reduced breakfast program. The second piece is that we work with Whitson with regard to what that breakfast is, how that breakfast is served, what are the logistics associated with that, so it doesn't interfere with them going to class in a timely manner, and that in fact they are fed. Those things are absolutely positively being done. As a matter of fact, there was an hour and a half long transportation meeting today as we speak regarding some of those concerns.
Mr. Tyler.
Mr. Sheehan, I think my question is, you know, logistical concerns, yes, they're held by the principal. The school committee has a contract with the food vendor. So, that contract has to follow.
That's correct.
I mean, it's, I grant a principal may have concerns about their school, but there's a right way and wrong way to do that concern. What we don't want is our principals breaking a contract that we have with a vendor. I mean, if there's logistical concerns, it should go through the administration, it should come back to the school committee, because that contract may have to be an addendum or something to that. But that's a school committee concern if we want to change the language in the contract that Ed Bender has signed. I mean, of course, we want to be open to suggestions, but not in the buildings every day. We can't tell you the best logistical way to handle a situation. But I do have concerns if any principal is going to make what they would call a judgment call on the best way to, you know, with the food vendor service, because it's contractual. And if we're changing the conditions of that contract, that's a school committee issue. That's not a central office or a principal level issue.
The people in the buildings and principals involved in the altering of the breakfast program, in fact, were notified as such in those exact same terms, Mr. Tyler. So, I recognize that, and they also recognize that at this time as well.
Any other questions or comments related to this part of the issue? All right, so then I think, well, I just would close this part of it by saying that, again, I think that while there may have been some frustration with the method by which this was communicated, the importance, as has been stated by committee members, by Principal Zinni, and by the superintendent, of making sure that the transportation system is running efficiently, that students are getting to school on time, and that breakfast is being served, hot, cold, whatever they're entitled to. We just want to make sure that that's working well. So, I think what I'll ask is that if there are any further changes, or if there are adjustments that are made, or upon reflecting on this issue over the summer, the administration identifies ways in which the systems can run more efficiently. I think the committee would like to hear about that at our meeting in August, so.
Got it.
Sound good?
Yep.
All right, moving on. The other issue was with regard to the present, and this was related to the presentation that we heard at the previous meeting as well by Dr. McCarthy, related to the programs that are shifting. And I know that you touched upon a variety of programs, some that were going from Brennan to Coelho. My sense is that the issue here is concentrated with programs that are moving from Willett Elementary School to Thatcher. I don't think any other, that's essentially it. So, if you could just give us a little more context on that, that would be helpful.
So, I feel the need to echo one thing that Ms. Zinni said in her statement, that everything is going to be okay, because we do have a plan and we are taking care of things.
It's always a good point to start with.
Yeah, I think it was important to say, the discussions to move Insights, which is our autism programming, started at the beginning of the school year, because we have several preschool students moving up to Insights. And Willett School does not have the space to have more students entering the Insights program. So, we really had an issue as to whether we were going to start moving other classrooms out of Willett, or further develop the Insights program in Willett. That got us looking at the programs, looking at the Thatcher space, looking at the high needs of the students that were in our preschool program, and looking at what really makes the most sense here. Those conversations started at the beginning of the school year. The conversations in regards to seriously looking at moving Insights over to Thatcher started in the wintertime. Ms. Zinni was absolutely included in on those conversations. Our meetings started in March, we had multiple meetings. The meetings involved meetings with staff members, meetings with both Willett staff, Thatcher staff, administration, coordinators. We went through every level of need, what was going to be addressed and supported by moving to Insights. And at the end of the day, after answering each one of Ms. Zinni's questions, that's when we agreed to move forward with this move. I had said on multiple occasions, I was not going to do this move if Ms. Zinni wasn't comfortable with it. I feel it's important for building administration to be supported in this move, recognizing it's a lot to put more special ed programs in that building, which is already special ed heavy. So, we didn't even move forward with the move until we had Ms. Zinni's okay, and were able to address all of her concerns. There were two concerns that were still left unaddressed. One was an assistant principal, and I've been in front of you advocating for that. And the other was a parking lot issue. I don't have control over the parking lot, but we've certainly all addressed the parking lot issues. So, those were the two.
Can I just say, is the parking lot issue still outstanding, is that something that we need to?
It is still something that we're still talking about. Ms. Joan DeAngelis spent significant time at the building, looking at it, making suggestions, and trying to develop a plan, so it's something that is under, under our, you know, on our radar.
And I would just say that the subcommittee under which that will come under will be convened in a very short period of time, so it sounds like that's an agenda item that should go on there immediately.
So, absolutely. And so, once we knew that there were two concerns that really we couldn't address, we felt comfortable moving forward with this move. We had meetings to notify staff of the move. We had meetings on the same day that we notified staff of the change. We notified parents and invited them to an informational night. I didn't want staff, parents to hear through staff of the changes. You know, I wanted everybody to understand what was happening. We had an informational night, it was hosted at Willett School. All of the staff came out so that the parents were reassured that there was going to be as minimal interruptions as possible for this move. And we then started actually looking at the physical plant at Thatcher. I took two walkthroughs with Ms. Zinni and a team. We identified the four rooms that would be used, a room for ABA therapy and the BCBA, two classrooms, I'm sorry, five rooms, a motor room and a speech room. Things that we don't have at Willett just for the program, and we're going to be able to have at Thatcher. Now, we're in the planning phase of throughout the summertime, getting the materials moved over. The classrooms aren't set up ideally the way they should be at Insights. We want to make improvements to them and have dividers in the classrooms, so each student has their own work area. We're ordering those, they will be delivered, and the classrooms will be set up as identified at that walk on May 28th by the start of the school year. In terms of ESY, ESY is running as regular, and the students have been at Thatcher for every year that we've had ESY there, and they will be there this year, and in the future, they'll be able to remain in their current classroom, so it'll be a true year-long program.
Is that one of the reasons, I mean, and I, all right, so two quick questions. The first, and you may have said this in the previous presentation, if so, I apologize. Approximately how many students who would not be at Thatcher this year will be at Thatcher next year as part of this program?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say that, I didn't tell you that before. There's eight students.
Okay.
So, we're moving eight students from Willett to Thatcher this year, and then it's a two-year phase, and the following year, we're moving five students.
Or, I mean, approximately, other students might enroll, correct?
Students could enroll, or students could move out of the program. But right now, there's eight students identified to move from Willett to Thatcher.
Okay, and since I forgot my second question, are there any other comments or questions from the committee? Mr. Tyler, then, Mr. Tyler?
I want to thank you all for explaining the issues, because yes, no matter how we receive a message, we have to ask those questions to our administration about why are we hearing this? I believe we have an outstanding administration team, and I've said that time and time again. And I can't see this as anything but a pot and shot by somebody walking out of this district that already had a job in another district. And, you know, the principals, teachers, anyone in our district, there's proper procedures and protocols that should be followed. It's called a problem-solving triangle that we have as a school committee policy. And I believe that was breached, I believe it was a potting shot at our administration, and I expressed that after Ms. Zinni's comments last week in open forum. To hear this at the end of a school year when supposedly there was these problems during- To hear this at the end of a school year when supposedly there was these problems during the year, I think is improper, at best, if you will. I will say that we as a district, we have a problem. We readily admit them as an administration and a school committee, and we're working doing on them and adjusting to them as best we can. But, you know, just the way it was aired out, and I appreciate everyone in the administration for, I know probably every member of the school committee contacted the administration individually and asked them to look into these issues and address it, which we have tonight, so I appreciate that. I stand before you, and I just think that out of borough school districts does not need something like this to happen. I mean, it puts us in a bad light when there's too many great things going on in this district, and you three are the head of that, and I appreciate that, and I just want to let you know that I support you fully.
Thank you. Mrs. Gels.
Marissa, just have, has a timetable for the move been articulated to all the teachers and staff involved? Because I know it's like going to be ripple effect.
Yes. So the staff, the teaching staff and paraprofessional staff are aware of the move. The ABA therapists will all be moving over as well. The related service providers is something we're still working out, because you'll, as you'll hear in a later presentation, the elementary school schedule is changing, which we know how, what FTEs of staff need to move to Thatcher in order to support this program. However, what the exact schedule is going to look like will look slightly different just based upon the scheduling changes, so.
Okay.
So the teaching staff, paraprofessional staff, ABA therapist, BCBA, yes.
And they have the timetable?
Yeah. Not the exact timetable, but I'm, actually just had a meeting with our BCBA and mapped that out exactly.
Mrs. Sawyer.
What happens with the five classrooms that you're taking over? Where would they go?
They're actually, it's amazing when you walk through that building, there are still empty spaces, spaces that the BCBAs and ABA therapists are going to be working in a room that is old reading materials that are just inventoried, and it's not a working space room right now, it's a collection of materials. The two classrooms, the building can absorb those two classrooms in other spaces. The speech room, I can't recall what was in there, but it wasn't being used as a teaching space. And then the speech and language room, I believe, was the abacus room, an abacus room that's moving. But the building is remarkable in that even with that, there was still spaces that we could identify for more use and growth of the program.
I believe it's our only building that has its own Wikipedia page, because it's a unique architecture, and that year it was built, there was a famous architect who was responsible for it. And so it was considered a novel style of building at the time, which stole Peter Thatcher factoid. Mr. Withers?
Yeah, I just want to agree with, but push back a little bit against what Mr. Tyler said, and that's, you know, first, I guess, an agreement, I want to thank the three of you for the explanations that are, I guess, Mr. Sawyer, you haven't spoken, but I'm sure you've played a vital role.
You're for support.
Superintendent Sheen.
He's always getting credit for stuff, he's got a good seat, you know.
And Dr. McCarthy, thank you for your explanations, they were helpful, they were important issues, no matter how they were raised. And so I thank you for explaining it, and explaining that Superintendent Sheen is being worked on, making sure the transportation issue was not an issue, and Dr. McCarthy explaining what, you know, what is going on with the moves. But I just, you know, I know there's some mixed feelings, I guess is one way to put it, about how the issues were raised. But at the same point, I think we all know, who are involved in the schools, that Principal Sinney has been a respected and good principal for us, and we are losing her, and I don't think, you know, I think we're going to feel that, you know, feel that, so to, I'm not comfortable with the potting shot language, I guess I would just say, I mean, I think, you know, there are questions about how it was raised and when it was raised, but they still were valid points to be raised, and I think our administration did a good job responding to it.
Mr. Tyler.
And Mr. Withers, I agree totally with you, and the way I started off last week after open forum, the very first thing I said, she was an outstanding principal. You know, I truly believe in Ms. Sinney. Ms. Sinney's school was used as one of the flagship things when we were on our superintendent process, you know. She is a great job, hard worker, that's why it was probably, I probably was a little more vocal about it than I would on other principals. But I truly believe that she was one of our great rising stars in this system. It's just, and it shouldn't end like that.
Sure.
That's just my part, it shouldn't have to end like that. We, she deserves better, this district deserves better. And again, yes, I thought she was an outstanding principal in this district.
Thank you. And I'll just close that point by saying that, you know, I think the questions raised with regard to the forum and the method of communication were legitimate. I also think, as I said that night, and as I enforced that night, that there's a, there's a right when the public forum is open for people to speak. Oftentimes, some of us who have sat at this table don't agree with the comments that are made, or the motivations behind them, but I think in this instance, you know, we have someone who's devoted her life over the last six years to our school district, and I can understand where that might at times influence someone's judgment. So, you know, whether I agree with it or not, you know, in my current position, I don't know that I have really the discretion to say, other than it's fine with me if other principals choose not to do that. But if they do, I'll defend their right to do so. So I think that's good with regard to the issues that were discussed. I think, obviously, the other issue that's been referenced tonight is that there is a principal transition that will take place at Thatcher. There's part of that that will be addressed as part of the budget discussion, but with regard to the processes that will be unfolding to fill the position, if Mr. Sheen wants to offer any comments about that now, we'd certainly.
No, we'll wait for the budget presentation.
Okay, sure. Okay, so we're going to move on now. Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. And Mr. Rooney and Mr. Connor will be joining us to discuss the first item that we ran out of time for. Come on up, Mr. Connor, we got a seat, I'm sure there's a chair. Maybe there isn't a chair, pull a chair up. Of course. And so the committee will remember that at our previous meeting, time was running short, as was patience and a variety of other resources. So we tabled this item and another item that we'll discuss later tonight. Mr. Rooney, Mr. Connor, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who's introducing this topic, if Mr. Sheen or Mr. Rooney, but.
Every ten years or so, most high schools in this country, in fact, goes through an accreditation process. We're lucky that in New England, well, we have the, what they call NEASC, and it's called the, it's really the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and it is an accreditation process. And this goes back since nineteen, eighteen eighty-five, that they started to accredit different schools. And they just don't do high schools. They do middle schools, and they do elementary schools if chosen, and they involve in some state stuff as well. The reality is that I'm very, having served on NEASC committees in different states and for different school systems, and to provide that accreditation process to those districts, it's, I believe it's long overdue that NEASC in fact looks at themselves and looks at a point of retooling. It has become very cumbersome, and very, very expensive. And over the last several years, my feeling has been that the effort and work that has been put in by school systems and the amount of money doesn't yield what you get back in the process. And NEASC must have realized this as well, because less and less schools, in fact, were going for accreditation. So they're in the process of retooling. So at this juncture, I'll hand it to Mr. Rooney as the high school president, principal, and Mr. Connor as the assistant principal, because they were going to have to live this experience, and there are a lot of things up in the air with the NEASC, so I'll hand it over to them.
Mr. Rooney.
First of all, we truly do value self-study, and one of the major aspects of the NEASC accreditation process is that you go through an entire year, if not a little bit longer, of a self-study process. We were actually scheduled to be going through the self-study process this year with a visit in the spring of two thousand fifteen. And NEASC approached us last year and said, we are looking at some things, the state has a considerable amount of accountability, there is a brand-new teacher evaluation system that's on the horizon, would you be interested in postponing your process for a year? So given the fact that the new teacher evaluation system was upon us, that we were evaluating the implementation of DDMs, we welcomed the opportunity to table the process for a year. And then, as you saw in some of the literature that I provided to you prior to our last meeting, several districts started to express concern to NEASC about the fact that it was less emphasis on the teaching and learning aspect of our schools, and more concern about trying to push for a new facility, whether it be a stadium and a track like we had hoped to get through the last accreditation process, or in some cases, some towns get, you know, an entirely new building. So NEASC, as Mr. Sheen said, NEASC realized that they needed to, you know, look inward, in a sense, self-study themselves, and, you know, it is our feeling that if NEASC is in the process of retooling, and, you know, they realize that they're going to repackage themselves, that we would ask your permission to suspend the process for a year. The information that we just received, and I handed it out to you just a few minutes ago, we just received this yesterday, is a letter from their president and CEO, which is truly the most concrete representation of what they plan to do for their own retooling that we've seen in probably a year's worth of discussions. There have been a lot of, there have been a lot of meetings that have been held. I went, you know, I went to a meeting in their headquarters in Burlington, and to be quite honest, I didn't really necessarily grasp exactly what it was that they felt that they were, that they were going to display when they retooled. But fortunately, this letter just came out yesterday from their president and CTO, which, CEO, which gives a very concrete, phase-by-phase implementation of NEASC's new look. And so we are not asking to bail out of NEASC, we would still pay our dues, we would still support, we would still provide any supporting materials. In fact, in good faith, two members of our staff and I went to a NEASC training about a month ago, not knowing how this process was going to evolve with the school committee. So, you know, we're poised to start next year if you felt that that was the direction that we needed to go, but we're asking your consideration of tabling it for a year.
Okay. Before I open, I just want to ask two sort of framing questions. The committee has not had the chance to obviously review this document that came out tonight. Does this contemplate districts that are making this decision now, and does it have any impact on the action that's being requested of the committee? In other words, is part of their phase-by-phase reform of themselves such that they'll say, if you're a district who suspends until we actually implement this, there'll be no impact of any kind? And related to that, the request is to suspend the self-study participation, does that have any effect on our designation as granted to us by the organization?
No.
Okay. So the, so the.
We're, we are still accredited.
Okay.
And we're still dues-paying members of NEASC.
It's just a matter of if the reform didn't take place, and if the committee at a subsequent date wanted to continue with the process, we would be behind schedule. Is that essentially the implication? Okay. Questions? Mr. Withers.
So this might be a multi-part question, I think, because it's a little bit different than my understanding coming in tonight. So if we approved what you're recommending, that we table this for a year, we would not lose our accreditation?
Correct.
If then, a year from now, when we take this up, we decided that we were going to proceed with remaining accredited with them, including the self-study, whatever we had to do, would that put us in a disadvantage at that time?
No, it actually would put us at an advantage, because, and again, I just received this yesterday, so I, other than trying to get it to you last night, it wasn't really that much.
I wasn't suggesting that we could have gotten it, I was just didn't, I just didn't know what it said, so.
No, but just, you know, as far as to put this in context, it actually puts us at an advantage, because it is timed in such a way that their rollout would be almost simultaneous with when we would want to restart the self-study process. So in other words, you know, they would have their house in order, so to speak, and then we would have a clearer vision of what their, what their new expectations are.
So the part of your, your original recommendation from June eleventh that we received before the last meeting about, you know, most, some colleges don't consider the accreditation at all, there are a few that consider it sometimes, and then there are three that express concern if you weren't accredited, that's actually not a concern for the vote we're making today?
Correct.
Correct?
At least for the class of two thousand fifteen, certainly.
And for the next class, if we decide to go forward with it, correct?
Right.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
I mean, you know, the Burlington School Department, the Burlington Public Schools, they completely divested themselves of NEASC. And in conversation, you know, they're not paying dues anymore, they don't want to get back into the process, you know, because the way that they view it is the Commonwealth has so much accountability that why serve an additional master in terms of NEASC? We don't, we don't necessarily feel that way, because we do feel that there is a lot of value to the actual self-study part of NEASC. But, you know, Burlington, who, again, who is no longer accredited, they're no longer members of NEASC, they got students into Boston College and, you know, UMass and things like that.
Great. I think, thank you, because I think my, part of my concern was, you know, there are three colleges that express concern, including Boston College, UMass Dartmouth, and I think UNC Chapel Hill, and a few other local schools that, you know, said it could be a factor. And even if it's not a deciding factor, I wouldn't want to disadvantage our children. But you telling me today that that's not going to be an issue, makes you feel a whole lot better about what the vote is that you're looking for us to do.
I mean, I, you know, in my twenty-six years in education, I've always been focused on the students selfishly, that I, given that I have a senior in the class of two thousand fifteen, this, you know, this particular senior class is a little more important to me. But, you know, as far as the decision, we looked at it through the lens of any potential impact on our students.
Yeah, and I went to Holy Cross and I saw that mentioned, so I wanted to make sure you.
I knew that. Mr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Well, I just want to be clear here, that you don't lose your accreditation quickly. It's a process that takes a long period of time in which, you know, you have to, you have to go through a lot of steps to actually get yourself into that position. I mean, there are, there are warnings, you go, you can be placed on warnings, but even when you're on probation, you're still an accredited school. The number of schools that lose their accreditation is quite minuscule, so, and there would, a lot of things would happen between here and there, and, you know, of course, if they respond in any way that seems to be putting us on that course, you know, Principal Rooney would bring that to our attention, and we would chart a course away from that. We have ample opportunity to make sure that we don't end up there.
Mr. Larson, then, Mrs. Gels.
I'm not sure which of you might be able to answer this, but who accredits, who does the accreditation of NEASC? And I guess, in our world, you know, we have to calibrate our equipment to gauges. We have to send our gauges out to be calibrated by an approved supplier. That approved supplier has to be approved by the international weights measures and all these other folks. Are they, NEASC, just self-governing, self-overseeing? Is there someone who actually comes in and accredits NEASC as being a real person to accredit other people, or?
The country is split into regions, and each region has its own association, which is independent of the others, and they actually are different, they do, they handle it differently, they do different things, and they are autonomous.
Mr. Connor, did you want to?
There is, there is, in the, amongst the autonomous regions, there is a national kind of board, but it doesn't seem to.
I think it's just a matter of which year we have to end up spending it.
What was the original expectation that the self-study would be this coming year?
It would be this coming year.
Right. So whether or not we do the self-study in the following year, that's, is it really based on what they're going to do between now and then? Is that a good way to put it?
Yes. And the, the, the actual, the twenty-five, approximately twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure is really in your visit year, which we would do the self, you know, we were on schedule to do the self-study in the fourteen, fifteen school year, and then in the
the 14, 15 school year, and then in the, sometime during the 15, 16 school year, they come and visit, and they, they give you your choice of fall or spring, and Attleboro has historically been spring. So, you know, the, the actual self-study process, you know, I mean, there, there wouldn't have been a tremendous amount of financial investment in next year's budget anyway.
Mr. Withers.
Just to point out a clarification to Mr. Storrs' question, we didn't budget for this, for next year anyway, so it's not like by not doing this, we're going to see $25,000, correct?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Storrs.
But the following year, because we're obviously not going to be doing the self-study this year, at a minimum, we're pushing everything back by one year, so the following year, the $25,000 for the visit will not be in the budget that year.
Except that over the course of this year, there could be points raised that result in us making a different decision, but the decision tonight would not have a fiscal impact.
Right. No, but what I'm saying is, by making this decision, we're not doing the self-study in school year 2014, 15. At a minimum, we could do it the following year, which would effectively push the schedule back by a year.
Well, except that, unless NIASC reforms itself such that the whole thing is different, but, I mean...
Well, even if they reform it, that, we wouldn't be probably, it wouldn't be next year.
You know, if we had a crystal ball, I think that we would be, we would be forming our self-study process...
Doing something else tonight if we had a crystal ball, sure. We'd find something to...
But I, I think we would be doing the self-study within the 15, 16 school year, and so then for FY '17, we would be requesting funds for the, the visit.
Twenty-five thousand in FY '17 is, yeah, I wish, wish that was our, as we prepare for our final budget, but I wish that was our, our biggest issue, the 25 grand in FY '17. But, okay, good questions, good comments. I think just a couple of things very quickly. The idea of 90% of the professional development time being spent devoted toward this process was a number that really stood out to me. I think that particularly for a process that you say is not teaching and learning-heavy. For an organization that is, is, is supposed to be and is trying to be focused on teaching and learning, to spend 90% of the PD time on satisfying an organization that seems more concerned with, with infrastructure, I think is, or operational, whatever, that's, that was concerning to me. The fact that there's no immediate impact, I think, is important, and so if someone would like to make a motion, to, a motion. I know it's close to the summer.
Well, I guess I would ask, what is the motion that we're...
To endorse the administration's recommendation to suspend the process.
I'll make the motion that we suspend the process for, endorse the Principal Rooney administration's recommendation, we suspend the process for one year.
I'll second that.
Here we go. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, 9-0. Thank you, Mr. Rooney, thank you, Mr. Connor. If you could stay put for our next item, which is the consideration of the 2014, 2015 school calendar. This calendar was presented to the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee several months ago. It was presented to the school committee, I want to say, April, and is back before us tonight because, as we know, the school year's going to end tomorrow, and we need a calendar. So, before the buzzer sounds, Mr. Sawyer, Mr. Sheehan, if you have anything to add related to this calendar?
Well, this calendar is unchanged from the last time you looked at it back, and I believe it was very, very early, April. It does have our last school day as June 18th, and it'll be listed as the last school day of June 23rd, because as we discussed, regulations require that we have those five days into the calendar for snow days. So, we all know that if there are no snow days, it'll be June 18th, but when we publicly list the last day of school, it'll be listed as the 23rd. Previously, the committee has voted on a high school graduation date of June 12th. In looking at regulations and really contemplating this particular end date, I think the high school feels that it was being conservative in its choice of the 12th, wanted to make sure that it had a graduation date that would be within regulations, not knowing when to close the school, but if we're contemplating this end date this evening, I, I think I would suggest that we look at changing the graduation date to June 5th.
Mr. Rooney, anything to add to that, or...
I, I just echo what Mr. Sawyer said, you know, in the absence of a calendar, we wanted to be conservative and make sure that we met the state regulations, but, you know, the, the graduate, one graduation was moved from Sundays to Fridays at, you know, a few years ago. It was basically the Friday after Memorial Day week, and although that Friday continues to creep earlier and those single digits continue to decrease, at some point, Memorial Day is going to cycle down deeper into the month of May, and then, you know, our graduation date will, you know, go back to more of a, you know, a 10th or a 9th or something like that. But, you know, if, if this calendar is going to go forward, then we see no reason to change the tradition.
Sure. Mrs. Gels.
How much influence did you draw to have on that?
She doesn't know. She also...
She watches school committee, I'm sure she knows.
Oh, sure she does.
That's why you want it later, to keep her in the school neighborhood, to control her longer.
You can't, you can't blame her for that. Any other, Mr. Storrs?
Well, I want to make a motion to that effect, if, if that's okay. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the administration recommendation of changing our graduation for the 2014 to 15 school year to 6:00 PM on June, Friday, June 5th at Tozer Cassidy Field.
Okay. Are you making a motion with the calendar as well?
I, I figure we could keep that part separate, since that's a further, a much more involved discussion, similar to the last motion that we made about the graduation, keep that one separate.
Okay. I just, well, is, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. I think I would just ask that we do a friendly amendment to not have the time in there because I don't, I assume we're going to start at 6:00 PM, but I'm not sure.
I was trying to use your wording from the last motion.
Not sure we want to block that. Okay. Any further, Mr. Withers?
Should we do it in reverse and approve the calendar first? Because we can approve, the administration said the May 50 is contingent on approving the calendar, so to approve the...
That's a fair point.
I mean, it's semantics, I, well, it might not be semantics, I don't know what the motion is.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So, with that, Mr. Storrs, would you...
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem dealing with that later, but the motion's on the floor, so I don't know.
I'm asking, would you...
I'd be willing to retract it if that's acceptable, absolutely.
Okay. So, the motion's withdrawn, and now, now back to the calendar. Either comments or questions related to the calendar? Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I would just say, we, I received an email about the last day for seniors and how it affects the orientation classes of the, the colleges, the University, Monoa 10. So, I just want to make sure, when we're talking about this schedule, that we're providing the best service we can for outgoing seniors, so they don't have to miss a graduation process or something like that to take their next step in life. So, I just want that into consideration when we're asking about the calendar question.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the calendar as presented by the administration.
Second. Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, so we have a calendar. Mr. Storrs would like to...
I'll try again. Yep, so I, I make a motion that the school committee goes with the administration's recommendation for the Attleboro 2014, 15 school year high school graduation to be Friday, June 5th at Tozer Cassidy Field.
You know, part of that is it rains, it's not going to be...
Weather permitting.
There you go.
There you go. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rooney, thank you, Mr. Connor. We'll see you next time. Okay. Moving on, we, we have another scheduling-related issue. Mr. DeAngelis, if you could join the committee? And this was detailed in a memo that was circulated to the school committee last week. Mr. Sawyer, Mr. DeAngelis, if you could give us some background on this.
Sure. There are, as I, you know, explained in the memo, there were a couple of things going on that led to this memo. The first is that, as we've discussed previously, there's a little bit of a shakeup in the specials rotation in elementary schools. Next year, we will be making sure that all those classes are being taught by certified teachers, and that's led to a couple of changes. The special teachers themselves had some concerns about the schedules in their buildings, and so the principals made a decision this year to convene a group to talk about the issue, get the, get up the process going, to bring these voices to the table who have felt that their concerns were not being heard of late. So, the principals created a process by which they brought representatives from their schools together in a district group that met a couple times, and from that, they created some recommendations, and also, you know, they're going to continue their work. It's, it wasn't a one-shot deal, this is something that they're going, they want to work on over time to continue to develop these issues. As stated in the memo, two recommendations really came out of their work. The first is that they would like to go to a rotating schedule for the elementary specials, which is to say that no longer is, you know, art on Monday and music on Tuesday, they want to go to a five-day schedule, A through E, where, you know, art is, is day A and music is day B. And then those days rotate regardless of what day of the week they are. What this will help prevent is that students who have, you know, Monday, whatever they have Monday, they get a lot less of, and that's a real problem in terms of delivering the curriculum effectively for the people who teach kids on Mondays. Also, because of certain vagaries in the schedule, when snow days fall, in a given, given year, other days can be hard-hit, especially in, over a period of, of a couple of weeks, for various reasons, you, a teacher might find that they just keep missing the same group of kids. And the teachers want this addressed, because they, you know, they, they think that every kid deserves equal access to what it is that they're teaching. So, by rotating the days, you know, if we have a snow day, you know, if the, the day that was inclement weather was day C, you know, when, when we all come back to school, that's day C. And this will allow that, that equal access that they all want. The other thing that was discussed, well, it's a second recess. They think that the school day is long. In fact, of the area schools, Attleboro has the longest student day out of any school locally, varying from, you know, I think the, the closest to us is about five minutes difference, and others, I think the average is around 20-minute difference.
Right. It's 20.
This is in our geographic region?
Geographic region, yeah. So, we have a very long student day, and it's something that, you know, we think that it's a benefit to our students that they have time in school, but we really believe that another break would be in everyone's best interest, that, you know, there's a law of diminishing returns, and that, especially with, with, with young kids, a chance to get up and move around and engage in, in, you know, social play will make a big difference in the instructional time that we still are preserving, so that the kids are more focused when they get back, because they've had a chance to get up and move around. I don't know if you want to add to that.
And, yeah, and the research really talks about engagement in the classroom, so when we really looked at the length of the day, and we looked on time on learning, a lot of the research talks about physical, physical activity and the impact it has on thinking and learning and engagement in the classroom. So, we really agreed with the faculty, we did a, a survey, so everybody got a chance to give us information back, and they really felt like students would benefit from that time to not only socialize, but to break away and get some physical energy out, and then come back and be really prepared to be engaged in learning.
So, these recommendations are really, I mean, they're a product of teacher empowerment, and I think they're, they're student-focused, which is why it was so easy to get behind them and to bring them to your attention there today, that we plan to move forward on these. The third point is back to that piece where we had to make a change to the schedule because we needed to cover all those sections of, of library that were currently in the, in the rotation. One of the things that I think we've wanted to do for some time is to move towards having dedicated staff to each building. The teachers who are split between buildings, and many of our specialists are, you know, in one building one day and another building another, you know, they, I, I think that they find that that very difficult, and the schools find it difficult that, you know, when they want to talk to these people, they have to wait till the day that they're there, and it's hard to really integrate into the fabric of the school when you're just not there permanently. So, in dealing with the problem we have with the need to restructure that, we decided to make a move that would result in fully dedicated 1.0 FTE specialist in all five elementary schools. And all but two of the schools can cover what they need to with those four, and two schools, Thatcher and Studley, because of their programs and their size, need a little bit more than that, so we'll have actually one person who floats to provide a little bit of extra to cover the, the full schedule.
Right.
So, these are three changes that we have planned for next September, that we'll certainly be doing communication to parents about all these changes. I know as a parent, I'm concerned about remembering what day to get the kids in their, in their gym clothes.
Sneakers.
Yeah. So, that's going to be a challenge.
I suspect, well, never mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on, I'm not gonna...
Thank you. So, you know, we're going to communicate this with parents, but these are moves we're, we're excited about and wanted to bring to your attention.
And I just wanted to jump in, because I think with the specialists being at the one building, it gives us some really good opportunities to do some integration of art with social studies and, you know, interdisciplinary planning for teachers across the curriculum. So, I think that would really be a benefit for the students as well.
You mentioned that one, there was one floater that would be...
Yes.
What, is that a particular subject, or...
Physical education.
Okay. Thanks. Questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Storrs?
The specials, are there, is it the same five?
So, it's four, it's art, music, PE, and technology.
So, in a five-day schedule with four specials, how are we dealing with it?
Each grade gets one of the subjects twice.
Twice.
Okay. And is that changing throughout the year, or is that constant through the entire year, that they get the same special twice for the entire year?
It rotates based on trimester.
Yeah.
Rotates based on the trimester.
Because this is brand-new, it's always been the five, so, so changing to the four. You know, I'm very supportive of the two recesses, I think that's something we've needed for a long time, so I'm glad you, you guys are looking to do that. Another area I would love to see, even if it was simply by five minutes, is the lunches. I've heard a lot of concern about the duration of the lunches for the students, and, and some of them, I'm not sure if you've heard the same, but...
I have, and I, actually, that's a really good point. We actually have started some mock scheduling with Aspen, and that is one of the areas that came up, that we're really looking at, can we add some time there, additional time, because I know that by the time you get lunch and you have time for lunch, 20 minutes doesn't seem to be a lot of time. So, we have done some mock scheduling to really look at that piece, because that's a concern that's come up.
Also, I have three scheduled meetings with the Witsen management system and myself and some central office administrators regarding, if you want to give the kids more time for lunch, then get them in and out of the lunch lines faster.
Right.
So, the piece is not just adding more time to lunch, the piece is getting them with their lunches in their seats faster. So, we're looking at better ways by which to do that, and that's been a concern throughout the course of the school year as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. It was, the question I was going to ask, as you clearly anticipated, is that my, you know, I think we, we all have preferences in terms of the time, the length of day, and how it's spent, and whatnot, but if there's anything that can be done on the Witsens' end to make that time more efficient, I think that would be greatly appreciated by the committee, and you could certainly pass that along to them. Mr. Sawyer?
What would, what would the length of the second recess be?
It's 15 minutes. So, right now, they get 10 minutes after lunch, they have a 10-minute recess, so we're either looking to add a 15-minute recess in the morning, and we did it really, we did a mock schedule with one of the schools. So, if a student had a specialist in the afternoon, we built in the recess in the morning, and if they had a specialist in the morning, we built in the break in the afternoon.
And in regards to winter, what would you be doing with the children?
Well, that's a really good, we've talked about really doing some brain gym in the classroom, and doing some other activities that we can do in the classroom to continue to give them that break.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Just to follow up on a point that I think, or similar to what Mr. Sawyer was saying, I think, you know, what I see in this, both during your presentation and reading the memo, is that we can be driven by teaching and learning concerns, and the solutions proposed do not always sound like the teaching and learning, the traditional teaching and learning solutions, because this is, the point of this is to keep students engaged and to try to, you know, bring about greater growth, but that doesn't necessarily mean jamming a book in their face and telling them that they need to score higher on a test. I think that's important, I think you see examples of that throughout the different grade levels, and I hope that we can have more conversations of this nature that focus on that level of student engagement. Mr. Larson?
I just, I think it's important just to reiterate. I think this is fantastic, the way this all started, you know, coming from the folks in the buildings and working with you guys and just, and having this all come together. I think it's a great, great process to see happen.
It's a model for how we wish to solve our problems moving forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's a very, very good point. And so, this doesn't frankly rise to the level of something that the committee would sanction with a vote, but I think I would offer a motion just to offer the committee's support and endorsement, both for the process and for the rollout and for its implementation.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have one. Quick question. Ms. Storrs? I know Kina Gordon is part of the specialist process, right? And that's the maintaining?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. DeAngelis. Thank you, Ms. Storrs.
Thank you.
Mr. Storrs, you have a personal report for us?
Yes, I have a couple of items for you this evening. I have two retirements. Janet Toner, a special ed teacher at the network, and Lynn Burns, a childcare provider at the high school preschool. I have three resignations. Catherine Zinni, principal of Thatcher. Francesca Austin, a paraprofessional at Thatcher, and Julie Medor, clerk at Brennan. I also have two appointments for you this evening. Mark Rasso, the CT graphics communication teacher for the high school, and Brandon Mooney, security monitor for the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Storrs. I just want to make two comments in response to the personal report. The first one, I was, I want to thank the committee members who were kind enough to present citations to the retiring teachers. As tomorrow is the final day of, a number of individuals in the district will be teaching school in Attleboro. And I know that I happened to be at Studly when Mr. Tyler presented citations to the three individuals there who were departing. And I would say that the level of commitment and dedication that these individuals exhibited from, I wasn't around from the start of some of their careers, but certainly up until the final chapter of their Attleboro career, it was really remarkable. It was, it was really inspiring. And I would imagine that that sentiment is shared by their more inexperienced colleagues who they had the pleasure to work with in recent years. So, we'll have a motion later to sanction the citations. I'm not sure that really requires, they've already been handed out, so hopefully we can get that through. But I just, I counted up, for the retiring teachers alone, there are 260 years of teaching experience leaving the district tomorrow. And so, we certainly just want to acknowledge that and recognize them. Mrs. Gels?
I just want to, as far as Julie Medor, just not only just, you know, a great para and a great clerk, but really with her help with Mrs. Heller, the work that she did with Brennan, best buddies is just immeasurable. And she'll have big shoes to fill. She really, they've done a wonderful job over there.
Thank you. It's that time of year, obviously we have a lot of those. And another one particularly, who we're sorry to see go, of course, is Mrs. Zinni, who we, I see here tonight, who I would say that some of the most intense moments in this room have been people trying to hold on to Mrs. Zinni when, when she was preparing to take on a new professional challenge, which she moved from Willett to Thatcher. And I think for those who have had the chance to work with her, we can certainly recognize why that's the case. So, Mrs. Zinni, on behalf of the committee and the students, the families that you've had, have had the pleasure to work with you, we just want to say thank you and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I just want to touch on that, Dave. Absolutely, I completely agree. I would like to thank the chairperson first. I mean, I don't think people realize is he can come up with some pretty creative work on these citations. It makes these retiring teachers feel special. And it was very well-received at Studly. I'm sorry, I had to go to the other ones. But, and when you talk about the years' experience, three educators, Mr. Legg, Mrs. Devine, and Mrs. Peabody, almost 100 years. And I can't tell the years because Mrs. Peabody, Mrs. Devine said, "Don't you dare put that on the certificate." But again, almost 100 years with just three teachers. So, I know other people are going to step it up, but that's a lot of experience walking out the door. And they were extremely appreciative of the chairperson being there that night too and recognizing them and the committee as a whole for giving out those citations. So, again, I want to thank the chair and everybody on the committee for the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Mr. Larson?
Ms. Connor helped me at the high school today with the citations. I appreciate that, his help. His recommendation, which is something we should explore, is doing these at the building-level staff meetings that they have. I believe the last one would have been the end of last month, but we could recognize them in front of all of their peers and their fellow teachers and seem like a great idea to consider for next year, so.
No, it's a good point. Mr. Sheen has actually floated the idea, along with Ms. McGinnis in his office, about the possibility of a retirement luncheon of some kind. So, that might be something that we look into. But, and the other thing I would say, and this occurred to me particularly when we were at the Steve Newman track dedication, that volunteers play a very invaluable role in the Attleboro school system. And Mrs. Zinni has a whole training program that I was, I had the pleasure to sit in on once for volunteers. And I think, I wonder if there is some sort of organized program that we may want to consider asking the administration to look into, to essentially try to build a volunteer core of individuals who have the institutional knowledge of the Attleboro schools and who are going to have more free time. Not Mr. Legg, Mr. Legg has taken on a very important role in the community.
He has.
But others may have some more time. And perhaps we could, we may want to think about that type of program going into next year to see if we can claw back some of these individuals to see, at a reduced schedule. But there may be some, some good work to be done. So, to all our retirees and those who are moving on to new challenges, we wish them well. And thank you for the, Ms. Storrs?
I just wanted to conclude the personal report by, with an update of the process to fill Mrs. Zinni's position. We're going to use the same process that we used last year to fill both Hill, Robertson, and Willett. It'll be a representative group of stakeholders from that school, including teachers and parents. And they'll, you know, represent a cross-section of the various stakeholders in that school. Ms. DeAngelis will be the chair of that screening committee. The job is posted. Applications are already coming in. And we will be moving quickly to fill that position as quickly as possible. And later in the presentation, related to the budget, I'm going to talk about a transition element.
Sure. Thank you very much. Okay, so, Mr. Rose, I jumped the gun, but I want you to stay put. If you have anything to add on Park, you jump in there.
Thank you very much.
Our next, our next issue is consideration of the statewide assessment that the Attleboro School District will engage in, in the 14-15 school year. Mr. Storrs, Mr. Sheen, if anyone wants to jump in and provide the background.
So, the state is requiring that we make a decision about what state assessment we use for the 2015 testing year. We can stay with MCAS or we can go to Park. We have to make this decision by June 30th. If we do not make the decision by June 30th, they will not guarantee whatever decision we make. So, that's almost the first decision we have to make is whether or not to act by June 30th, which, we're, we're running out of time on that one. Then, we have to decide this decision about MCAS versus Park. And we can decide to do, it's not just one, it's not all or nothing. The first decision is grades three through eight. Park, that's an all or nothing decision for those grades, math and ELA. So, grades three through eight, Park, yes or no. Another distinct decision is whether or not to do Park in ninth grade. And that could be math and/or ELA. And then again, Park in 11th grade, math and/or ELA. So, those are distinct decisions that may, need to be made. There is no decision to be made about grade 10. Grade 10 must be MCAS. And there is no Park alt. So, all students on alternative assessments must do MCAS alt as well. So, that sort of frames the decision. We spent quite a bit of time in the district talking about this, doing our homework. The state was a little bit slow in unfolding the details. And we listened to the webinars and read the various things that they put out for us to, to help make the decision. In the end, I would say that it's a close call from our perspective as to what to do. And ultimately, it's a close call because honestly, I, it shouldn't matter what we pick. What matters is the teaching and learning that goes on in the classroom every day. Our students will be prepared for whatever assessment the state throws at us because, you know, our teachers do an excellent job every day of getting those kids ready by teaching them what the kids need to learn. And the assessment should be almost an afterthought. So, I would like to believe that we will be prepared for whichever assessment and that it's not as important a decision as we might make it out to be. But that being said, we need to make one. And while, I think depending on who you ask, you'll find people in either corner because it's not a clear-cut one. And the fact that the state is so evenly divided as well, I think indicates that across the Commonwealth, there's this real divide on this issue. But in the end, it's the opinion of the administration, and that's both the central office and building administrators, that we believe that the Commonwealth is going to ultimately go with Park, whether it should or it shouldn't. And that the sooner Attleboro adopts Park, the better for all of us. The students and the teachers will be more prepared for the day that it actually becomes required. And for that reason, we are recommending that we take the Park in 2015 for grades three through eight and in ninth grade, math and ELA, because that assessment would provide data that 10th-grade teachers could use to help prepare kids for MCAS, which still counts. But we are advising not to do Park for grade 11 because that's, at this time, not a requirement. And there's no need to burden the high school with that much extra testing.
Sure. Could you just very quickly, I think you've, you've done a good job in terms of the grade level specific issues, but could you just expand a little bit upon the sort of Park readiness issue and why the administration believes it would be advantageous to?
I think a number of things take place here. Number one, it's always very important for all students who take Sand Ice test to know the format of the test, know what, not the content of the test per se, but in fact, what is the format of the test? Because the format will be different than MCAS. So, getting used to that format is a huge advantage for our kids. The other piece is that we know that we will not be able to provide an online test in our middle schools because our infrastructure won't be there and we won't be ready to do that.
In 14-15.
Yes. So consequently, to be able to do the paper version of POC, which we may end up having to do anyways, gives us an advantage of knowing what that paper version is like. At the same time, we will be at the high school level taking the, the online version for our ninth graders in both ELA and in math. So, we'll be able to do both tests, the written, the paper version as well as the online version.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Storrs?
Two quick ones. And you and I, we've already had conversations about this. So, right now, MCAS, how many days out of the classroom are the students between?
Four, I guess.
I believe it's four.
It depends on the grade.
That's true. I'm talking for math and ELA though. And I know that composition comes in. But for the majority of the students, is it, is it two and two?
Yeah, two and two, where there's a composition, there'd be an extra day.
Right. And Park ups that to, I believe, nine. So, they'll be spending, effectively twice the time out of.
I don't have the exact minutes for the nine days added up in minutes-wise. They spread that out more so.
So, that is not, that is not my understanding.
You don't, you don't understand it's nine separate tests?
No, I do not.
But as far as what Mr. Sheen just said, I think that's important. MCAS is on-time.
Yes.
And I think that's very important for certain student populations. While Park is going to become a time test that is meant to be taken online.
As of now.
As of now. It's supposed to be a time, well, they're not telling us anything different. So, we have to assume that it is what we're being told right now, which is a time test that is meant to be taken online, that a paper version is going to be subpar compared to what the purpose of the test is.
Yeah, my concern with the paper version is that the length of time that you, it takes to get the paper version back, the data, it's no different than MCAS now.
That goes into a whole nother concern because the data that we're going to get if we choose to go to Park is minimal at best. While MCAS, we would get the standard data that we're used to, that we can use for trending analysis, that shows us what's working, what needs, you know, support, changes. Well, with Park, we're not going to get that. They're withholding that level of data next year.
You get, exactly right. But you get a different type of information from POC than the standard information that you ordinarily get from MCAS.
My understanding is they're going to try to create some sort of comparison for the aggregate score, but they're not going to give you.
They're not doing that.
They're not even going to give you.
That's not happening at all.
That's not even happening now. So, we're definitely not getting the same level of data that we're used to. So, we're going to have a kind of a hole in our data if we choose to go to Park.
It won't be significant. And again, this shouldn't be as complicated as anyone makes it out to be.
Not complicated, it's fine.
It's, the bottom line is that if you believe that the POC test will be the Sand Ice test in the state of Massachusetts in years to come, that may lead you into one decision or another. Mr. Storrs is right. It's taken a long time to get the information from the state and accurate information from the state and everything else. And they're muddling through this. They've also backed this test up. They also have not had the special education alternative assessment completed at this particular time.
Yeah, the state would get a needs improvement, to say the least, on their rollout of this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But is it fair to say though, that if the decision had already been made with regard to 15-16 and that was in, set in stone, and that the question was whether or not you want to, you know, ride into the sunset with MCAS or make the switch and get ready for Park, that there would, there really wouldn't be much debate? Is that, is that a fair statement?
Sure.
Okay, so the question, so the question, it seems to some degree hinges on whether or not the transition is ultimately, is ultimately made, which I think there is some legitimate question about, but...
And, and the point of the transition is, you want to have some knowledge prior to?
Yep.
Or do you want to do it as a first-shot deal?
Yep. Mr. Larson had a question, I believe.
Well, I, you're making the points that I think are really at the, at the root of all this. At some point, MCAS will go away. There will be some replacement someday to MCAS. I mean, nothing lasts forever. And so be it. So, given the opportunity, I don't want to say to have a free pass at Park, but to have a chance of doing Park next year where, to the best of my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not as, how the children, how the students do on Park versus how they do on MCAS, they're going to get more of a free, free pass on doing Park next year, get a chance to see what it looks like. It's going to be different versus all of a sudden, if they made the transition in the following school year, it's going to count. It's the first time they're seeing it. There's going to be bugs. It would have been nice to have gone through this once before. I think those advantages
Huge.
are huge. I think the opportunity to test drive something before, you know, you really have to take it out for a ride is, I just, I can't see the downside of this. I mean, and I can't help but think that MCAS will go away at some point. It's going to be replaced whether some national standard comes through and supersedes it.
Absolutely. So, I'd like to clarify. So, I'm not exactly sure about the number of days, but there are definitely more testing days in Park than there are in MCAS.
Right.
But as you've mentioned, because MCAS is on-time and Park is timed, the actual amount of time testing, I think, is actually less in Park.
Collectively.
Collectively.
But that could also be looked at as a negative for some student population.
Sure, sure. I mean, it's, it's, it's more shorter periods of testing rather than fewer longer periods of testing. I mean, right now, MCAS is an all-day event on those days, whereas Park will be a disruption in the day. And the other thing is, there is going to be not only student data, but accountability data for schools from Park. It's going to come out later in the, in the data season next, next, you know, not this fall, but the following fall. This year, we get no data. But for 2015, in the fall of 2015, we will get an accountability rating. Will be held harmless if it goes down, but we will be getting accountability data for the, for the schools if we go Park, just as a clarification.
I think Mr. Larson had a follow-up question. Mr. Gels, Mr. Storrs, and Mr. Withers.
I mean, I appreciate the information on the testing because, I mean, I know like when my kids and their friends, when MCAS comes, I mean, everybody gets stressed out about it because they know it's an all-day affair. Their attention span for MCAS all day long is, I mean, let's be serious. I mean, we're, we're adding a second recess because the kid's attention span. So, if we spread it out over more days, do it for shorter periods of time, yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Storrs, it's going to encompass more, more days. But I think the stress level on the kids, I can't help but think to be minimized. By that, hopefully, they'll do better. So, I mean, again, I just, I think there's so many positives. And there's a lot of unknowns. But I, I think the opportunity to get through some of the unknowns.
But, but if there are a lot of unknowns, which there is, to postpone this, the unknowns don't go away.
It doesn't, no, it won't fix.
It doesn't, no, it won't fix itself.
Some of the unknowns will be answered.
Right.
One of the pieces that I'm, I'm more enthralled with is the online test. Knowing exactly what our kids are going to be up against, what is the technology device? How are they going to be prepared in order to do that? That gives us a understanding of how we move forward, what we got to do in that, in our preparation.
Well, and, and staying on that subject, I wouldn't want to be online, taking the test for the first time, and find out we have a problem.
And have it count.
And have it count.
Right.
Because you reboot, I mean, you start, I mean, just, I mean.
That's really what drives the recommendation.
Yeah, exactly.
Nobody, nobody thinks that Park is hands-down better than MCAS. Nobody. I mean, people who are with a stronger ELA focus, I think, are a little bit more excited about Park, because Park is really more suited for the new frameworks than the, the MCAS currently is. But if, if Park doesn't come to, come to be, then MCAS will be changed, make those adjustments. I mean, that will happen, and so that'll work itself out. Really, the recommendation comes down to, we all believe that the state is heavily invested in Park, and therefore will choose to do Park. And for that reason, you know, all the concerns about this, we're just pushing, we're just kicking that can down the road rather than giving ourselves a chance to be better prepared for it. And that's, so it's not for a, an embracement of Park per se. It's, it's sort of a practical desire to give ourselves as much time to prepare as possible.
Mrs. Scales.
I think when we talked about it back in curriculum also long ago, I had stated that I had gone to several PTO meetings where they had just finished doing their field testing, and that they were, the principals there and the staff there, they were happy that they had that opportunity to test that, that little piece of it. So I think testing the bigger piece would be even better for us, the opportunity.
Whoever I said first, between Mr. Storrs and Mr. Withers, I'll trust the two of you.
I'm going to read something from the Mass website who's been tracking this. I mean, the listserv's been lighting up on this for the last month.
This is sort of the Mass?
Mass, Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Yeah, thank you. I thought the Massachusetts says.
A mask, mask. It's, you know, three months ago, I would have said Park's inevitable. Right now, I'm not so sure. It says right here, Park is anything but inevitable. They started with 23 states, and they're down to nine. Twice as many states have chosen Smarter Balance, which is a different test. And more states than that are opting for testing solutions other than either Park or Smarter Balance, which, as you talked about, our experts are saying MCAS is better. Why should we get away from MCAS? Instead, let's change MCAS, make an online version of it, and have the best test as we've always had, which leads to the highest levels of student achievement, which Massachusetts already had. So again, when I, you know, to finish it, there are so many questions of confusion and lack of information out there about Park that I find it difficult to throw out what we have to start over with a new test that just because of the threat, that will likely be where we end up anyway. If our communities say no thanks to Park, perhaps that will have an impact on the final decision. I think what this has really come down to is, we all assume it's going to happen because Mitchell Chester is the chair of the governing board of Park. Is that a fair?
It's more than that, but that's certainly a big piece of it.
Right. So I, I agree with you. Testing is going to change. There's no doubt. But it's not definitively Park. So why should our students be the guinea pigs? Why don't we let other students be the guinea pigs? And if they choose to go to Park, and it's a, right now, it's a fair if, then we do it. And, and I think the other thing that's extremely important, we talked about it recently, you and I, the accommodations for the special education and the ELL students. Right now, it's all based on MCAS. And they've said, if we choose to go to Park, you have to change the accommodations to Park accommodations. Is that a fair statement so far?
What I read is that they said that there would be accommodations, and then they were very vague about what that would really look like.
I, I've read recently that they said you have to change the Park accommodations, and they're not telling us what those are going to be. So that's our most vulnerable student population, and it's such a huge unknown, scares me. And I think for any other reason, that reason alone should really weigh on our minds. You know, we're going to be signing up for something that we do not know how it will affect those students, and that, that's bothersome to me.
Except, can I just say one thing, though? I think Mr. Sawyer's point at the beginning was important, that this is the assessment of students. It is not the teaching of students. If we were talking about, we're going to adjust the curriculum or the instructional practices, and we don't know how it's going to affect these populations of students, I think that would, you know, be a cause for more than great concern. But the, the issue before us is just, how are they going to be tested on what they learn? And I, and I think that, that, I think that is why the administration began its presentation with a question over just how significant of a decision is this? Testing is important. Assessments are necessary, because we need to gauge students' progress, our buildings' progress, and the district's progress as a whole. But I think that, you know, in the past, frankly, this district has at times overemphasized testing and its role in the educational process. And I think that, you know, I don't want to send the message that we're sort of sliding back into a mindset of, you know, tests are what, you know, we're here to do. And I don't, I don't think that's the case. But, and that's really the point, that I, that's how I interpreted the administration's point. So I'd certainly invite them to, to clarify any of my shortcomings with that articulation.
I, I just have one comment that. We did the pilot with regard to PAC. We chose to do that. That gave us information and so forth. At the same time, you know, Mr. Storrs says that, okay, why don't we let another district, let their kids be the guinea pigs? The problem is, I don't mind their kids being the guinea pigs, but we don't have access to those guinea pigs. We only have access to our students and our teachers giving the PAC, either online or written, to look at what that test format is and so forth. We don't have access to those other kids and ask them, what do you think? Or to those teachers who actually gave it in another district. And unfortunately, the way that the choice is, we can't have our community too into half and half. The state says it's either this or this.
Right.
We did have the choice. We made the compromise with regard to, it's not going to benefit our juniors to do PAC.
Sure.
So that's, we took it out. And, and that was part of a conversation I had with Mr. Storrs.
Yep.
And so, but we've had numerous conversations within the district with all of our administration as well, which we got to.
I want to be very clear. I, I'm personally, not that anyone's listening, I'm displeased with the state and the game that they're playing here.
Right.
I don't, I don't think this is fair. They're asking us to gamble on whether or not Park is going to happen or not. And they're bribing us with the promise of being held harmless as a way to entice us to do what they want us to do.
Right.
I think they are guilty of those things, Mr. Storrs. I really do. However, fair or not, we have to make a choice. And if I thought that we wouldn't end up at Park in the end, I'd sit here tonight and tell you, we shouldn't do it. Let some other community be the guinea pig. But in a world where I do believe, if I have, if you're going to make me guess, my guess is that we will, and it's, you know, Mitchell Chester's role is a part of it, but Park, the whole Park consortium is filled with former Massachusetts people. And I think the ties are very, very deep, and I, I, he's overcommitted, and I think he has the power to do it. So I'm guessing yes, and for that reason.
I think there's a whole other question, that what exactly is the downside if they don't go to it? If they don't go to it, then we did Park for a year. Then we go back to MCAS, or we do something else. But I'm not sure. And that's, and, and we don't want holes in the data, because data helps us make better decisions. But I also don't want data to become what it has, frankly, in the past, which is a dictatorship of data. But Mr. Withers, and then Mr. Tyler.
Yeah, I think, you know, first, first, in the abstract and in general terms, I agree with you, Mr. Storrs. If we were talking about right now, taking a vote on whether or not Park should be the law of the state or MCAS, I would be the first person up, you know, banging on the table saying, we should not do Park. And nationally, I would say we should not do Common Core. I absolutely agree with you 100%. But that's not what we're deciding, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to decide if Park is likely to be the law of the state, as unfortunate as it may be, or some of us think it may be, what's the best decision? And I, I don't see how we can forego an opportunity to give our students a chance and our professionals a chance to get used to this new test. And it's, it's not about making our students guinea pigs. The students aren't guinea pigs. It's, we are learning how to do this test, so that when it counts, we can do it right. And so those first, that first-year students aren't, they're not treated unfairly, and they're not, they don't get unfavorable results, because we don't know what we're doing. So why not take the free shot at it? And like I said, I agree with you. I, I read the articles. I, I agree with you 100% on the, on Park versus MCAS. But, you know, given the reality of the situation, the state we're in, I think we have to do what's best for the kids, and that's, I think, going with Park at this time.
Mr. Tyler, then Mrs. Sawyer.
Well-stated, Mr. Withers. I, I agree with you. I agree with that totally. I wouldn't want that decision in front of us tonight, you know. First, I want to thank the superintendent. I did have a lot of questions about this, and unfortunately, he decided to come over to the Brennan barbecue. I had already eaten, and by the time we were done eating, get to eat. But he answered a lot of my questions about this, the pros and cons, because it, it still is a tough decision. But I think my question would be that, when you said that we're only going to do it in a high school online, why are we not trying to test our technology, infrastructure at the lower levels? We do have computer labs.
So our, our plan is to do a full, a full assessment of what we're capable of doing. We can certainly do ninth grade. That, that part, we're confident in. I believe that with a, a set of purchases we just made in June out of the Race to the Top grant, the remaining funds we have, we bought Chromebook cards for all the elementary schools. So with the new end computing labs that all the elementary schools were upgraded to this year from money that the mayor was generous enough to, to provide, and with these new Chromebook cards, I think we can seriously consider going online in the elementary schools. Because the elementary schools only test two grades. So with the two labs, the schools are small, the, the two grades being tested, I, I think there's a real legitimate chance that we'll be able to do that. I can't promise that tonight. I mean, I think we'd have to really study that very carefully, but I think there's a, there's a legitimate chance. The middle schools, I'm less optimistic about. All four grades in the middle schools get tested. And currently, they have two labs to work with. And I, I just, I mean, again, we'll take a good hard look at it, and I would love to go online. But I, if there's going to be a place where it's a challenge, it's going to be at our middle schools.
Thank you. Just to add on to that point, I think that I'm glad to see that, that all those options are being explored. I'm glad to see that, it sounds like we may have some more hope at the high school. But the point, the part that we really need to get to in this district is that it's, there isn't like a chance that we could administer online tests in the buildings. And I think that another issue that, you know, I think it's sort of underlies a lot of the support to the degree that there is some for moving to Park, is that this is a committee that is trying to advocate for, and in the very near future, will do so very vocally, for upgraded techno, technology infrastructure in the district. We're not where we need to be, and Park, as, as we've said over and over and over again, Park is not the principal reason that we need to upgrade our technology infrastructure, but it's certainly one of the bullet points. And I think that in any, any way we can use the situation that we're in now to try to influence all the other stakeholders to, to try to move forward on that, I think is important. Mrs. Sawyer?
Well, I agree with Mr. Larson, that kids do stress out over the MCAS exams. But Park exams were designed to have students show their mastery in a way that it will be hard, if not impossible, to replicate if put on paper. And so if we can't have all students do it on computers, then I think it's unfair to have a whole grade level do it on paper. Plus, we won't get the test, that results back in time to, so that if certain students need help in areas, we won't be able to assist them and get them, plus the data won't be back. And I just think that's unfair for a whole grade level to be left out.
I, I mean, I, I think there's, there's certainly some equity issues there. I think my question would be, though, if, if not moving to Park lessens the chance that we get the technology upgrades that we need, and then the state ultimately adopts Park, don't we then put our students at an even greater disadvantage when the exam is implemented in 15, 16? That would be my concern, is I think we, as a school committee, need to be determining, how do we best build the argument that we need that, that upgrade? And if, if administering the exam helps to that end, then I, I would say that that is in the best interest of the students. But it's, there's certainly no question that there's a major fairness issue, which is why I think it's embarrassing that the state has, has put districts in this, in this position. Mrs. Storrs?
Well, you know, first, in regard to that, I do, you know, I want to say that, yeah, well, let me start with this. Looking at the data that's been provided on the Mass, on Mass, at this time, 63 school districts have voted to stay with MCAS, and 54 have chosen to go to Park. I think that's very telling. And the majority of those that, that have chosen to go to, or stay with MCAS did so unanimously. I, I think that shows that there's a lot of discussions going on across the Commonwealth, and a lot of people are coming to the same conclusions I'm doing. This was today, the latest and greatest. Now, I'm sure it's going to change between, you know, some of the bigger districts haven't.
Well, that sample only equates to one-third of the districts in the state.
Absolutely. There's going to be changes between now and.
It's 50/50.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty darn close. The big thing I want to say is, there's going to be practice tests. They've already come out and said that, that between now and when it's implemented, there will be practice tests. So it's not as if we're not going to have the ability to have our students and have our staff run through the testing. And then here is also a quote from Mitchell Chester, which I think is very important, very telling. "School systems should be making the appropriate investments in regard to online test-taking equipment." We're switching, whether it's Park or different MCAS, we're switching to an online test. Whether it's two years or three years, it's going to happen. So we need the equipment. There, there's no doubt about it. Nobody can question that. Nobody could actually say, as you were just, you know, discussing, that because we didn't switch to Park this year, we don't need the equipment. It's coming. We have to have that equipment. So that's, that's necessary. According to Mitchell Chester, we should pay for it ourselves. To me, that's an unfunded mandate right there. And I don't think anybody would argue that. I would hope nobody would argue that. So this just seems like the wrong year, in my opinion, to make this change. We're not prepared for it. We don't have the technology. They're not answering a lot of questions, especially about the accommodations for special education. They're admitting that MCAS is better than Park, that whatever they give next year for Park is going to change, and what they ultimately do in two years, if it's Park, is going to be different. Because that's what this is. It's, it's, the test is a beta test this next year. And the fact that they're doing the hold harmless, as Mr. Sawyer already pointed out, it, it's bribing school districts to, to get away with a year of no accountability. And I don't think no accountability is what, what Attleboro wants or needs. Where we're doing too well to have a no, no accountability year.
I could tell you, it, it was not a major point of discussion.
I'm sure it wasn't.
In this district. It's just, it's not enticing to us.
Correct.
Not, it's not, that's not what our decision was about.
And I appreciate your saying that.
Well, yeah, I, I think that's good. I think that's what I'd like to hear both sides say. But, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how much more there is to say on the topic. I think it's been a very good, robust discussion. I think good points are made. I suspect if we were sitting in the, whatever room the Board of Education sits in for the state, I don't think this, that we'd be passing Park. I don't think we, it has the support of the Attleboro School Committee, for whatever that's worth. But I think, you know, for me at least, I, I think there's a, there's a practicality to this. And I think that if the state sticks with MCAS going forward in 15, 16, I personally will not feel, and this committee chooses to adopt the Park for a year, while there'll be a hiccup in the data, if it, I, I, I'm not sure that that's going to result in something detrimental to the district, at least in a way that outweighs my concerns about trying to leverage this to, to get where we need to be. And Mr. Storrs said that no one should say that we don't need the technology infrastructure. I agree with you. No one should. Unfortunately, people do. And I want to, I, the, the, I think just the, the better argument we can make for it, I think, I think the, the better off we'll be. So would anyone like to, to make a motion?
If I can make the motions, just because I've got them kind of mapped out here.
Sounds, sounds good.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to go with the administration's recommendation that Attleboro School District goes with Park for grades three through eight. For next year. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So this is the full administration's recommendation, or?
No, it's not.
I think you should do it.
You want to do it piece by piece?
Because I think it, it might, or no?
We can do it all or nothing, or we can do it piece by piece? Whichever, which rather.
I, I defer to you.
I just, I had it all, the way they were describing it, I figured I'd lay it all out and just, because we're going to do some of it in Park and some of it in MCAS, I'm assuming, so. So if we, let's just go with three through eight.
Okay, so the, the motion has been seconded by Ms. Singer, and is on the Park exam for grades three through eight. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Withers?
And I realize this is, this is redundant at this point, and it, it's going to apply to all the motions, but, you know, I just want to reiterate that this vote is in no way a endorsement of, a vote, yes, is in no way an endorsement of Park, the testing or what the state has done to us. It's, that's not what this vote is, period, and that can't be emphasized enough.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a very fair point. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zeta?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
No.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mrs. Stores?
No.
Motion passes seven-two. And you did a great job with that, so, Mr. Larson, if you want to.
Make a motion that for the next school year, grade nine does the Park math and does the Park ELA.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Stores?
One important thing to think about this is, when they get to tenth grade, until twenty-eighteen graduation year, tenth grade has to take MCAS for ELA and math, and they still have to take MCAS for science. The idea of taking our ninth graders who are used to one format for test, MCAS, that's what they've been taking since third grade, and now all of a sudden putting a whole different type of testing in there, to me, that's a negative. Because the following year, they have to go, they have to revert back to the testing that they were previously used to. In fact, this argument came from Mr. Sheen, thank you, Mr. Sheen, for this argument, I appreciate it. So I see that as a negative, and it's a concern.
Mr. Tyler?
I just wanted to state, I mean, I think it was great discussion about the pros and cons, and I appreciate that from all the committee members in the administration. But I think Mr. Sawyer said it best when he started this presentation tonight. This is a fifty-fifty. We're going to bring the district forward no matter what you vote on this. We're not stopping tomorrow just because of Park or MCAS. So again, my vote will be to go with the recommendation of the administration.
Yes, sir.
I just to comment about the different testing flipping back and forth. I don't necessarily see that as a negative, simply for the fact that my science teacher might test me different than my, you know, teachers test differently. I think it's good that you expose kids to different types of testing, they're going to get different testing in all levels of their education. So I think it just teaches them, I don't think it's a negative that they have one test one year and a different kind of test the next year.
But we're talking about standardized tests, we're not talking about, you know, this is a little bit different, this is high stakes testing.
Well, I want to, but again, I want to go back to the point that Mr. Sawyer began the presentation with. It's high stakes, there's a graduation requirement component to it, it's very important. It is not what school is about. The Attleboro schools are not about testing, they are about learning. And I think that, I get that people feel strongly about it, people have preferences, I think that, I think they're all important points. But I just want to be very clear, because I think sometimes what the committee spends its time on can be indicative of what the district values. And I don't, I want to, you know, and I'm basing this off of the basic agreement that we all approved in January. And nowhere on it did it say, we're going to be a school system that gets great test scores. As I don't, I know, it's important, it's necessary, I think that it was a step forward for public education twenty years ago, when, you know, we moved in this direction, although I would say, having been here when the MCAS was implemented, that it was not a popular, it was not a popular decision at the time, but, and most changes aren't, but, you know, our focus is on teaching and learning. The testing is a necessary component of that. Mrs. Stores?
And you're absolutely right. In fact, the way I look at all this discussion that we've been having, we're not focused on the test. We're, you know, we're not really debating, you know, Park versus MCAS, we're, the focus is on the students. You know, my concerns have to do with the students, and the administration's recommendation has to do with the staff and the students, and so-
And I think it's in their estimation that this is in the students' best interest, and I don't doubt that.
And my concerns are, as I feel, it's not, absolutely, but the point is that the focus is where it belongs, on the students.
Okay, well, any further discussion? We'll start with, Mr. Stores, Mr. Stores?
No.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
No.
Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mrs. Zeta?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-two.
Just as a point of clarification, we don't need a motion to stay with MCAS for the tenth grade because-
Nope, no choice.
No choice, so. Then the last motion would be to go with the administration's recommendation to do MCAS in eleventh grade for both math and MCAS in ELA.
If the eleventh graders get MCAS, they're going to have a rude surprise, I think. So-
You may want to revise your motion.
To not do Park in eleventh grade.
There's no test.
There is no MCAS.
There is no MCAS.
Okay.
Okay.
So there is no-
So the motion is to decline to take Park in eleventh grade?
Okay.
Okay. Discussion. I think there's a broad consensus that our eleventh graders should be focusing on what everyone else is throughout the year. Roll call vote, Mr. Stores?
Just to verify, a yes means no to Park.
Yes is no Park.
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mrs. Zeta?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes nine-o. Thank you to the administration for the recommendations and the work, and thank you to the committee for a robust discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, move on now to our next agenda item, which is our final consideration of the FY-14 school budget. It has been presented to this committee, I believe this is the eighth time the budget has been presented publicly. It was taken on various forms and had various dollar amounts. And I appreciate Mr. Rose, Mr. Sheen, and Mr. Sawyer for their work in putting this together. See Mr. Fratello back there, and I'm sure he's paying close attention, as he'll be joining Mr. Rose in the administration of this budget. And so, again, bearing in mind that we have seen this budget very many times, there's a hard copy that was distributed to the committee tonight. The committee knows, obviously, that the appropriation approved by the city council on Monday night is, as we expected it would be, less than the request that was sent to the mayor. It is, on the net school spending side, it is the same number that came from the mayor to the municipal council. There is a discrepancy, which I anticipate we'll have some discussion about in the transportation line item. But if we could just go through, because there are, the vote tonight to approve the, to the budget, will need to incorporate a series of reductions in certain line items. I don't think there are any surprises. I think as we talked about on April, I believe it was thirtieth, when we made our most significant budget cuts, we knew that there were a number of items in the request lines or request column that would ultimately end up on the cutting room floor. And if, I'm not sure who's going to lead the presentation, but Mr. Sawyer has the remote, so we'll say Mr. Sawyer's going to lead, and if you could just go through and we'll take.
So first, just a review of how we got here. I mean, it started back on April seventh in the Finance Subcommittee, and the last check is Monday's presentation and approval. All right, it's Tuesday of the budget, and here we are tonight on the twenty-fifth for your final approval of our budget.
I think one of the most important things that we do in the budget process is, in fact, what that process is and what information is gained throughout the process, because it gives insight with regard to what is the direction that the school system is headed, what are the priorities within the school district, and in fact, as they continue to be student-centered, and what is in the best interest of our students to move forward as a district. And I think that we've seen this and shown this in the nine different presentations that we've had, and tonight being the tenth one.
So just to review the city side, the net school spending in FY-14, the required spending was sixty-five point nine million. When you take out the eligible city expenditures and put back the charter school reimbursement, you end up with a number of sixty-two point three million dollars for net school spending in FY-14, which was the final number for the FY-14 budget. So moving forward to this year, the state required sixty-six point nine million, back out the eligible expenditures, put back the charter school reimbursement, and you get to sixty-three point one million. And the real news story this year is that the city added a million dollars above net school spending, which in my career has never happened before, and it has, as you're going to see, has made a tremendous impact on our budget, and I am very appreciative of the work this school committee did in working with the unions and the city council to make this happen. It's made a huge impact on, for the good of the students in this district.
We're certainly grateful to the municipal government, as well as Mayor Dumas. I don't want to get bogged down in this question right now, but I just want it in everyone's minds, the eligible city expenditures includes the amount of money that essentially is cost, costs the district because of charter school enrollments. And, you know, as we say, every budget season, there's no, there's no criticism directed at anyone in Attleboro for choosing to enroll in any school, but strategically speaking, there is a educational and a financial necessity when it comes to keeping our, the students who are living in Attleboro, going to school in Attleboro. And at some point, very soon in the, in FY-15, I would like to entertain a discussion about what types of strategies we can start putting in place to try to see if there are perhaps some fence sitters who maybe need to think about coming home. But that's, again, a discussion for another time.
So that's how we arrive at our file number, sixty-four point one. All right, so just a review of the process. In terms of the numbers, on the fourteenth, we were proposing eleven point six percent increase, which was a sixty-nine point six million dollar budget. By the nineteenth, you had whittled that down to sixty-six point three. On the twenty-seventh, the mayor proposed a budget of sixty-four point one million, which was a two point eight percent increase, and that is what the city council approved. Again, I think that was Monday. Transportation budget, which is apart from the net school spending budget, we started with a request of three point four million dollars, which was a twelve and a half percent increase. By the nineteenth, we had increased that to three point seven, which is a twenty-two point seven percent increase. And this was in part a response to, you know, our continuing problems with Mccity Vento and out of district, and our inability to control those factors, and it was a decision that, in this room, to make sure that we ask for enough money to cover, you know, increases for next year, and so that's why that number went up.
And I would just say that the school committee certainly gave direction to that effect to our administration, and we did so, frankly, in part, after consultations with the municipal government.
So that's why that number went up at that time. The mayor's proposal brought it back down to the original number, and the, the city, as you probably read in the paper, decided to level fund the transportation budget, returning it back down to this year's number of three point three million.
I know that there are questions or perhaps comments on this particular issue. I've seen two hands thus far. I'm inclined to allow the administration to finish the presentation and then circle back if there are no objections to that.
All right, so where does this leave us? For FY-15, we have increases over FY-14, and they are going to these things. A hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to educational materials, two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars to grant replacement for Race to the Top, two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in change for operational expenses, two hundred eighty thousand dollars into the substitute line. Those were all level services. And then, an increase to our personnel lines of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, almost seven thirty-eight, to bring a total increase of one point seven million dollars. Now, I'd like to point out that that number of seven thirty-seven, nine fifty-two, is six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, less than what we are contractually obligated to provide as a result of steps and lanes, so.
Which is a consequence primarily of retirements.
Yeah, well-
And the workforce reduction that you've implemented in June.
Yes. So that one point seven is the increase, and that's how we're spending it. So what did we cut out to get from what we proposed to what we were given? We cut out the FTEs for the elementary specials, we cut out the halftime service coordinator, we cut out the reservation for class size needs, the Thatcher assistant principal, the raises. There was a couple other adjustments, I massaged a couple numbers to make everything work out, so that's another two thousand dollars. And then, that six seventy-four shows up as the layoffs and retirement savings that brings us to the full amount that we cut, which is the two point two four. So that leaves us where we are. Sixty-two point three was FY-14, we put in the various needs, and that gets us to sixty-four one oh nine, which is a total increase of one point seven million, a two point eight percent increase. There are unmet needs, and I, you know, we've had discussions about, you know, what's a need, well, I'm going to say this with in all caps, needs, things that we have problems if we don't provide for next year. The first is the two and a half FTEs for elementary specials. We need adults in front of the children, and as we discussed earlier tonight, we've changed the schedule in the elementary schools that require these FTEs. The second priority, and these are in priority order, is a halftime assistant principal for Thatcher. The resignation of Ms. Zini puts us in a pretty tight bind. Monday is her last day, and Thatcher is the largest elementary school, it's also the most complicated elementary school, and it's also one that doesn't just, you know, close up shop for the summer. We need to provide some transition for that school, and that school needs leadership over the summer. I am requesting that the committee consider the creation of a halftime position that I would like to appoint someone to. We would then post and run a full search next spring for that position, but right now, we need somebody on Tuesday to take control of that building and get us through until we have a full-time principal, and that's my recommendation on that. We also need to restore some of the positions we cut, because we have class size needs. We are busy working on introductory transfers and things like that to, you know, try to massage the numbers, but there are going to be some, we have grades, especially in some of our elementary schools, where class sizes are over twenty-eight, and that's unacceptable to us, so we'd like to put back some, some teachers to bring those numbers down. And we still have a need for a student service coordinator. Now, I know that we had originally proposed one, and that we cut the budgetary impact down to a half, but, you know, we still need a one point oh, we have compliance issues that we really wish to meet, and we would like to find the funds to provide that position, and all of these other things within the current funds that we have. So we know that we're not getting extra money for these items, but these are things we need, and we need to move money around within the budget to make these things happen.
When the administration had sent me this afternoon an advanced copy of this as it was being finalized, and I, when I sent it back, had added this final slide, because I think that the presentation did an excellent job of communicating the evolution of this budget process, that it's sort of reached its final stage for the time being, but I wanted this extra slide to sort of just indicate some of the sort of zigzagging that has taken place over the past couple of months. The superintendent, in his original presentation to the school committee, the first week of April, did what he was asked to do. His administration assessed the needs of the district, developed priorities, and presented to them, presented them to the school committee in the budget presentation with regard to net school spending. The administration also followed our direction, again, after consultations with the municipal government, and made sure that we were, we, in a formal way, requested what we felt we needed on the transportation side. There were some variables that changed shortly thereafter that original presentation, and this committee asked the administration to go back and to make a new assessment, and that assessment is reflected in that second column there, which amounted to essentially a three point seven eight million dollar request with regard to transportation. The mayor, as we expected he would, sent his budget recommendations to the city council, and they included a reduction in both numbers from three point seven eight to three point four on the transportation side, and what it says up there, the two point two over what was initially appropriated after the school committee cuts, and then the one point seven is where, is where we ultimately landed. There are, I know there are, there are some questions with regard to the city council's budget message, which went from the city council to the mayor on Monday. I have some questions myself. I appeared before the city council last night. I anticipated, after reading in the newspaper that morning, that they were outraged by our management, that there may be some questions. Generally, when I'm outraged by an organization, the chair of the governing body of that organization comes before me and asks to answer questions, I usually prompt some questions, and there were, they were great questions, thoughtful questions about some of the initiatives that we're taking on and some of the programs. And then I kind of awkwardly stood at the podium in the hope that there might be some other questions about whatever the cause of the outrage was, and I- And, uh, I didn't get any. But somehow, the outrage had returned a few hours later after I had left. I did confer with President Cook, uh, subsequent to that meeting, I know some other members have as well. I am frankly at a loss, uh, with regard to the transportation number. I, I, I don't understand the, the reasoning. The criticism that was in the budget message was in relation to the command and control of our transportation services. I think, as the council knows, the command and control of the transportation services, uh, is something that this committee addressed in a, in a rather bold way, just, um, less than a month ago. I know they know that because some of them criticized us for it. So, again, with regard to transportation, um, I would just say that I'm confused, um, and, and frustrated. So, with that, I know Mr. Withers and Mr. Tyler, uh, had both had their hands, and then Mr. Storrs.
Yeah. I, I feel, I feel the need to, to get a lot, a lot off my chest frankly, and I apologize in advance because it's, I might go a little long and I might be a little rambling, but, uh, I think, from the beginning, I, as much as anyone, I think this council as a whole has advocated improving our relationship with the municipal council. And cautioning the rhetoric we use and, uh, discussing maybe disagreements we have with what, with what they do or decisions they make. But this, and we've done that, I think we've done a great job about that, we've done, we've been forthcoming, we've been open, um, throughout this process. But it's a two-way street. And it bothers me to no end that, that hasn't been reciprocated in, in any manner. I'm frankly, I'm tired, uh, I'm more than tired, I'm sick and tired of every single morning after municipal council meeting, opening the paper or watching the council meeting the night before and reading or seeing various councilmen or women, or, but frankly, it's been councilmen thrashing this committee, the administration, and the schools. Okay, the hearing rhetoric that they're outraged, that, uh, they're embarrassed for the schools, that we need to get our house in, in order. It's a slap in the face to us, and it's, it's, it's gone too far. And it's nasty, it's dishonest, uh, it's misinformed, and it's, it's grandstanding is what it is. And, and it's gotta stop. This is a new committee, this is a new administration. Okay, we have made a lot of changes, we've been open, we've been forthcoming, as Mr. Sawyer mentioned, we've had ten presentations on this budget. Okay? And this all comes back to transportation, I think we all know this comes back to transportation. And I think we've acknowledged that in hindsight, transportation was underfunded last year. Okay? We also acknowledge that, that that error was discovered too late. We acknowledge that it was discovered too late and it wasn't communicated soon enough, it wasn't just communicated properly enough. And I think this committee took that and said, we're responsible for that. And we took the administration to task frankly for that, and, and to the administration's credit, they took responsibility, they respond, and they responded, and I think they've taken upon themselves to make sure this doesn't happen again. So, we've taken responsibility for these errors, the errors in finding it and the errors in communicating it. But what we haven't taken responsibility for, and what I don't think we should ever take responsibility for, is the rising numbers. I mean, that's, that's a fact of life unfortunately now. We have rising homeless costs in this, in this city, we have rising transportation costs for, uh, transferring, uh, special needs students out of district. There's, it's, it's a way of life. Okay, so that's, it's, the rising costs are not our fault. Okay? But at the same time, we haven't sat on our hands over the past six months since we've been in office. We have written to the state legislator, legislators telling them the problems that McKinney Vento is providing to our district. We have rearranged the central administration office to, uh, better deal with increasing transportation problems to ensure that we get a better handle on this in the future. And we've requested more money so that, in the future, we won't be going back in the middle of the year. We've, we've done all these things, we've been in front of the city council three or four times about transportation. Okay, and, and the response to that has been one, they didn't sign on with us to any communication to the state legislator. They criticized us and accused us of pulling a boondoggle over them by rearranging the central administration to address this problem, even though it was a net zero effect to the budget. And they, in the end, slashed our budget so it's the same as it was last year, when they've been so outraged at us for failing to properly budget this year. Okay? For the mu- for the municipal council to present a budget where they do not give us additional funding for, for transportation, and to say that they're outraged by our administration of the budget and handling of it is, it's, it's a joke, is, is what it is, okay? It goes against everything that they've chastised us for, for the past year. And as mad as I am right now, and, and this is probably the first time anyone's seen me mad here, it's nothing compared to how mad I'm gonna be in February of next year, when we're back before them and someone has the audacity to question as to why we need more money. We'll need more money because they just cut our budget and criticized us for asking for that much. So, i- i- it's, it's unacceptable to me. And frankly, I think, you know, Mr. Murphy was there last night, I think there's one other issue that's a little bit unrelated, but, you know, while we're on the, the improper rhetoric, I think needs to be addressed. This phony con- controversy about using net school spending dollars to fund the transportation deficit right now. None of us wants to do that. The municipal government told us that they, that we were to use existing funds and not to come to them for, to them to fund this, and to find the funds ourselves. We agreed to do that as a show of good faith, i- is my recollection, because they've got, they had gone to bat with us to increase costs. So we did that. And then for them to criticize us and suggest that we don't recognize the importance in net school spending is, that's, that's just dishonest, is frankly what it is. And, and the councilmen who have done that either are misinformed or, or not paying attention.
Well, I can tell you, as I spoke with the mayor today, and I would just say they are not misinformed as to where that recommendation came from. They're not misinformed, they're just being disingenuous. And, and I, just to be very clear, we are talking about a small number of city councilors.
Absolutely, but the unfortunate reality is, it's, it's the city councilors who speak the loudest and get their names in, in this quotes in the paper. And it's, and that's what gets the headlines. And so, i- it's, it's beyond frustrating to me, and it's frustrating, I think, even more frustrating to me because I have, we have been so committed in having a better working relationship. And I remain committed to it.
I know, and I.
I spoke with council, President Cook today, I told him, I, I remain committed to a, a, a solid work and relationship. It's vital for the schools and the community, but that cannot be done if they're going to continuously blast us in rhetoric that's, that's unbecoming of, of the city and the schools. So, um, this is not the last school committee, this is not prior school committees, this isn't, this last administration, this is a new group that's working to change the culture. And, uh, it, it's frankly a slap in the face. And so, if I've gone overboard, I apologize, but it's, I've had enough frankly.
No, I, uh, I, I share your, your sentiment to say the least. And I, I would say that, you know, the council as a whole, I believe, values education.
I agree, yeah.
And there's no question in my mind that the majority of the councilors are, they, they, education is important to them, and a relationship with the school department and the school committee is important, that is clear. I mean, this is a city council that is comprised of educators, former educators, parents, a woman who has spent a, a big chunk of her life getting our kids to school and back safely. I mean, the number of, a lot of school committees around the Commonwealth would say, just looking at who's the roster, this is a city council that they want, these are people who value education. A s- small number of them have decided to play political games, and they're viewing the school department as a ping pong ball to be, you know, hit around the city council chamber. And the irony is they're doing it in a year where their president is trying mightily to reach out to us and build this partnership. And I, I think that it, you know, as you said, it is extremely unfortunate.
And they're treating us like a punching bag, and, and there's a few of them, I should say, and to reiterate your point, it is a few of them that are treating us like a punching bag, and they're doing it as public a way possible. And, um, as much as we are gonna work to work together with them, we can't, we can't continue to stand for it. I mean, we gotta push back.
I, I concur, Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Steve, very well said, you deserve that. Again, I, I think, you know, I'm gonna, using maybe a horse racing, uh, terminology, I don't wanna look a giftpost in the mouth either. You know, the municipal council and the mayor did step up in the two hundred one million dollars to give us the, more of a buffer on that school spending. But, uh, as Mr. Withers pointed out, I mean, it's just absolutely ridiculous that they would not give us an increase in the transportation. I mean, we, I don't know how we're gonna do it now, are we gonna send them a letter a week, ten letters a week saying, guess what, we're coming? We are coming, you know, so just remember we're coming, I don't know how we're going to get that message through. We've done quarterly reports all the time. And it's something we don't have control over, so, you know, Mr. Withers is absolutely right, and, and the, the end game is here. Because, don't make our administration look like a bunch of fools, we're not, we do our best, we best job we can, we, we keep the city informed. Again, I don't know how we're gonna keep delivering this message, but I think we're gonna have to tell the administration to keep delivering that message, even if it has to be on a daily basis, that, guess what, we're coming for more money. And the one point I will add to that, um, when we talk about net school spending, is I will say, now for the record, that you will not see my vote on a positive thing, to take money from net school spending to fund transportation in two thousand and fifteen. It's not going to happen on my side, and I will advocate this whole committee to stand with me on this. Because it's ridiculous to be accused of something that we told them was coming. And now that they really know it's coming, and say that, taking the spe- the stance that they took last night about us being irresponsible, using those net school dollars for something that we were told the city didn't have the fund for, I can, I can agree with that, but not in FY fifteen, I'm not gonna agree with that. We have too many needs in this school district to be reaching into that money for a single penny. And again, they will, you will not have a positive vote from me, uh, in FY fifteen, for one dollar to come out of net school spending to pay for a transportation deficit.
No, I, and I, I agree with that, I would say, um, uh, I, I was speaking for myself, but I, I probably, uh, rep, anticipating the, the committee's sentiment, and I communicated the same to Mayor Dumas today, that, um, our, and by the way, I wanna make this very clear too. The mayor's recommendation to the city council for transportation was three point four million dollars. This school committee's request was three point seven eight million dollars. There's a significant difference there. The mayor hasn't criticized the school committee, the school committee hasn't criticized the mayor. There hasn't, we, we haven't run off to the newspaper and claimed that we were misinformed, we haven't started calling people names, we haven't done any of the antics that's, a very small number, and I'd like to emphasize that because occasionally I can be misquoted, a very small number of city councilors have decided to engage in. Reasonable people can disagree. I, I have spoken with the mayor and his, uh, budget director in, in recent weeks, and we've talked about this issue and as it was developing. And we said, they would say, you know, you're three point four for, for transportation, and I said, you mean a three point seven eight? And they said, you mean a three point four, and I said, you mean a three point seven eight? And it, the, both entities drew on r- uh, logic and facts and numbers to make those projections. And we came out to different numbers, and that's okay. I have not seen any logic in the number that is, was up in the presentation today for the city council's appropriation. And I think that, you know, this is a committee that, again, w- we want to, to work with all of our municipal partners, but, um, we, we can't do it if we're being called names. Mr. Storrs?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Rose a couple of financial questions. Obviously, the steps were, we, we gave what we felt we needed at the beginning of last year, and we were underfunded. And then we had to go back and request more, and then go back and request more, and then we had to do the net school spending. Taking all of those elements, what was the total cost or expected with a couple days left for transportation in school year thirteen, fourteen?
You mean, yes.
Including the net school spending, please.
Sure. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars back in, uh, late January, early February. Numbers are still coming in, but the, the estimate was approximately an additional ninety thousand dollars. So, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, Mr. Storrs, to answer your question.
Well.
Added to the three point.
That's what I'm trying to get at. So it's, it's two hundred and sixty K on top of the three point oh eight.
Correct.
So, let's be honest, what's net school spending when it comes to transportation? It's not three point oh eight, it's three point three four.
It is.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, if you, if you have your May nineteenth, we projected the FY fourteen transportation expenditure, not budget, but expenditure to be three million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's real net school spending, that's what we, so we are, that's what we're spending this year.
But net, I'm not sure we're saying net school spending.
No, no.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Transportation.
Transportation net spending is what I should say. Uh, meaning, how much we paid last year for transportation, that's net spending. Yeah, this year. So, my point is, they're saying that, that we're getting the same.
Which is not level funding.
That's what I'm trying to get at, thank you. That, that's, that's my main point right there is, level funding is three million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, and not three point oh eight thousand.
And, and remember, this is, the, we were asked, or the superintendent was asked, as I know I was sitting right next to him, that, what would you ask for next year? And he said, in the line items that were being discussed that night, a twenty percent increase. And so even if you were going to make the argument, which I agree with Mr. Storrs, it's not level funding. If it's not, if it's not what is going to have been spent, then it doesn't include the, the, the position that, that, uh, we were told to take. Mr. Sawyer, and then Ms. Sear.
Well, I just wanna agree with Mr. Tyler that, um, that the city council is wrong. And I agree that I won't vote for spending any more net school spending, that this year we spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we could have used for wifi, and that now we're forcing our students to take park tests on paper, that we could have used those funds for computers or something else, and now we can't. And next year, I won't, I won't vote that way either, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Sear, Ms. Sear.
Um, I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Withers, because I, as well, am extremely disappointed and frustrated and angry, and I think that you articulated it very well, um, and I wanna thank you for that. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that you said, um, as well as, as Mr. Tyler. I, I will not support any use of net school spending funds in the future, and I, you know, we will be back there, whether it's, you know, December, February, and, and, you know, I'm curious to see how that's going to be received on the other end.
Mr. Larson?
I, I find it very amusing that a month ago, we were chastised for not being able to do math by some of the city council. Because if you look at the reports that we have in front of you, and you look at the reports that we've given them, and all this information has been shared, okay? We are projecting FY fourteen expenditures, as Mr. Sawyer just said, of three point three four eight, excuse, three, three, four eight. Okay? We have obligations with Bloom contract, with the Bloom contract for next year, that are going to go up another hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, no matter what this budget is, okay? They are funding us at this past year's three zero eight three, okay? So, the three zero eight three represents two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars less than where we think we're gonna end up at the end of this year. And we're very confident in that number. You need to add to that, I mean, this is where math comes in help, to that minority of those people up in the other building, the hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that we are contractually obligated in the Bloom contract, okay? So, the two sixty-five, the one thirty-nine is in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. We are gonna be twelve percent short on our transportation budget. I mean, four hundred thousand dollars on a three million dollar budget is just over twelve percent, twelve and a half somewhat percent, okay? So if there's anybody out there in Disneyland, up at City Hall, that thinks that this isn't gonna be a problem soon, that small minority, uh, of folks, I think are just gravely mistaken. I have had a number of conversations with some of the city councilors over the last few days. I don't know how they do math, um, I'm very confident in the ability of people in this building to do math, and to be twelve percent in the hole right from day one, I just don't know how to even start to comprehend how they think that's gonna happen.
It's inexplicable. I wanna touch on two points really quick, then I'll go to Mrs. Storrs. One of the, one of the things that multiple city councilors said last night during the discussion of how to pay for the FY fourteen deficit that was identified in April, was that the school committee had come forward and owned the mistake. And the superintendent and I were there, and I, uh, was the, the lead speaker that night, and I said that the school committee and the school department made two mistakes. This previous school committee did not ask for enough money in a formal way. Whatever conversations took place in the back rooms are one thing, but the school committee did not vote and formally request enough money to begin with. That was a mistake the school committee made, we were chastised for it, rightfully so. We also did not identify the deficits, uh, soon enough. Our internal controls should have been better, we should have been able to recognize, uh, the deficits as they were coming up, and we should have been able to go to the municipal government and say, we need more funds to, uh, fulfill the transportation obligations, which are city responsibilities, um, and we should have been able to do that earlier in the year. Those are two mistakes that we made. But as Mr. Withers said, no one on this school committee, and no one in this school administration, s- has taken responsibility for the deficits themselves. Any characterization, uh, to the contrary is, again, being disingenuous. We should have identified the deficit sooner, we didn't. We should have asked for more money to begin with, we didn't, for that reason. We supported the mayor's recommendation, uh, to f- fill that gap with money. That, and another thing, there was these questions about how, how is it this money is, uh, still, uh, in existence this late in the fiscal year? Well, two things. When you're running a sixty-five million dollar organization, you generally wanna provide a little bit of a buffer zone. And the second thing was, while we identified the deficits too late, they- And the second thing, it was while we identified the deficits too late, they were identified in April, and so there was a whole three-month period by which this school administration was able to prepare for this $90,000 cushion. And I think that's important because, you know, the term mea culpa was being thrown around, and I want to be very clear, this school committee will always offer a mea culpa when one is warranted, but we will not stand by while the mea culpa is attached to things that we didn't do. And we did not do anything that resulted in the deficits themselves. Mr. Storrs?
So, I just want to be very clear. By law, transportation is whose responsibility? I mean, let's put it on the table. Whose responsibility is transportation?
The city.
The city. We've told the city how much we need. They are underfunding us. As others have said, I will never, over the next, you know, one and a half years that I'm serving, I will never vote yes to taking money from net school spending to transportation. It is not the responsibility of the net school spending, it is the responsibility of the city side. We've told them how much we need, they've underfunded us. When we absolutely have to go to them and say, we need more money because you didn't fund us properly, where's that money going to come from? I guess what I'm really asking is, by law, they have to pay it, correct? When we fall into a deficit, which we know we're going to...
The legal mechanism is more, I think, a little more complicated than we want to get into right now, but the point that you're making is spot on, that the net school spending dollars are meant for designated purposes, that's why they are eligible expenses. The ineligible expenses, transportation being the primary one, is not where that money is meant to go toward. I've mentioned, I maybe, I think I've mentioned to at least one of you, is it something I've been thinking about for a while? I think that our, the passion and the commitment that this committee feels towards protecting these dollars is well-established. I think we know well how we got to the position that we were in, and I think that, I still continue to believe that by communicating as we did, and the committee never did take a formal vote, but we, I think we still demonstrated to those who were willing to listen to us that we are willing to be a responsible actor. I also think we've communicated tonight and on other nights very clearly that this is not a habit that we're going to get into, and I think what I would ask over the summer is for the policy subcommittee to work on the development of a new policy that will essentially restrict the use of net school spending dollars to instances in which there is at a minimum a supermajority vote of the school committee. I think that one of our responsibilities is not just to take positions that we feel very strongly about, but how do we institutionalize practices that ensures that future school committees have greater flexibility in their decision-making than we did. Right now, we are in a position where there was influences outside of our control that put us in a position where our options were limited, much more limited than some of the city councilors were representing last night. But in the future, I think we need an institutionalized way of ensuring that this school committee and our successors are not put in this position again. And so I would just ask Mr. Withers if the policies subcommittee could add that to your long list of things to develop.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think it's important to, you know, if for nothing else, then, you know, protection, you know, from what could happen in the future. But one thing I would add is that, while I think it's a good idea and a policy we should have in place and should already have in place, I don't think it would have changed the situation right now, because we had a request from the mayor to use those funds and not ask the city for money. I think we all felt the mayor went to bat for us, and we felt a sense of goodwill that, you know what, okay, we don't like it, we don't want to do it, but we grudgingly agreed to do it because frankly, what he was proposing to do to help us was too important to not do it. And to have that thrown back in our face, not by the mayor, but by city councilors who I came in tonight thinking probably knew, but it's my understanding now, absolutely no.
Absolutely, no question about it.
That's what's frustrating. That's what's frustrating. I don't think, having that policy in place wouldn't have changed, I don't think, the way we voted. It wouldn't have changed the outcome. And that's just, I just think is important to note, because that's what's most frustrating to me, is that that was a hard decision for all of us to make, okay? We all talked about how we didn't like to do it, and we all, you know, none of us felt good about it, but we did it for a reason, and we did it at the request of the same entity, maybe a different part of the entity, that's now, you know, taking to, taking to the media to criticize us and try and make us look like fools.
Yeah, there's an irony there, there's no question about that. Mr. Larson?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. If you look at the mayor's budget proposal for transportation, the $3.483, that does represent the FY14 expenditures that we're anticipating ending the year with the Bloom obligation for next year on top of that. So, I mean, the mayor obviously gets it, his office people get it.
He can do math.
He can do math.
It's not just the math, I mean, there's a rationale behind it.
And it makes sense. You know, the minority of folks downstairs obviously just don't.
And I would say, I mean, one of the things that came out of my conversation with the mayor today is that he asked that the school administration be prepared to join him at a city council meeting on July, in the hope that we can begin to make progress on this issue. And I'm sure that our administration is looking forward to that meeting, and I'm sure you do an excellent job representing us. And I would say that my problem with that is, look, we've got to do it, this issue's got to be addressed, you've got to go before them, and we'll join you, we'll help you communicate in, you know, a respectful, professional tone that we owe them as our partners in the municipal government. But I think, as I've said to city councilors, and as we've said at this table, and we will continue to say, every second that our administrative leadership team spends dealing with these issues, some of which are outside of our control and they're going to happen, some of which are completely within the control of others and have been precipitated by misjudgments, every second they spend on this, they are not spending on teaching and learning. And the community should be, to use the word that the city council used in their budget message, outraged by that, because the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have other things to do, and I would like them to get back to work, and not addressing manufactured issues by a very small group of city councilors. And so, I understand that when governmental bodies have friction, that there can be a tendency on the part by some members of the media, although we have great media in this community, and we appreciate the role that they play, to allow the, to characterize the situation as squabbling between elected officials. I get that. To some degree, that's exactly what's happening, okay? They're frustrated with us, we're frustrated with them. But we have begun to build a bridge between the city council and the school department that is going to be strong enough to support all 6,000 students, and this nonsense that has taken place over the last week is not going to deter us, and I know it's not going to deter the majority of members of the municipal council, because they're good people who value education, and I don't think that this, that these missteps should change the direction in which we're going in terms of building a strong working relationship, and I know that it won't. That being said, the money appropriated isn't enough, and it's irresponsible to put those numbers out there. And the next time I'm in front of the council, if they have questions, I hope that they, about these issues, I hope that they'll ask while I'm still there and after I've gone home. So, anyone else have anything else to say? All right, good. Can we go back to the actual slides for the stuff we need to vote on? I think, so, the vote tonight is to approve the total number, okay? Unless anyone wants to cut it. I'm just kidding. So, we're going to approve the total number as it stands. We're going to continue to work with the city council to make progress on the transportation issue. I think that a vote to, I think a vote to approve the total number would certainly authorize the administration to address those priorities. I think I would like a separate vote on the part-time assistant principal, which, as has been already said tonight, will be filled in an acting capacity while the recruitment process plays out. I would like to do those two votes separate, but I think it would be appropriate for the budget vote to take place first, and then we'll deal with the administrative piece. Mr. Storrs?
I'm sorry, we got so caught up in the transportation, I did have a question about the personnel 2% raises. Please help me out with, what is that one?
The 2% raises have been on each budget presentation as to what the school committee would like to give all of our employees raises.
I remember, so, we're saying we're leaving that in the...
No.
No, it's cutting, it's in the cuts.
This is cuts, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments related to the budget as presented by the administration? How about a motion?
Motion to approve the $64,109,386.31 budget for FY15.
Second.
Discussion. And this is the net school spending and the transportation, correct?
No.
It's just net school spending? I apologize, it is net school spending. I didn't hear the number, and I didn't want to ask you to repeat it. So I made a guess, and that's what happens.
Fifty-fifty, sharp.
Sure. Okay. We'll do a roll, any further discussion? A roll call vote, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zito?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Motion passes, 9-0.
Motion to approve transportation budget for fiscal year FY15, $3,83,347.
I have a question.
Take it.
If we vote no to this, what happens?
Then we have no transportation budget, which would be the type of logic that some of our friends down the street would apply, but...
Small majority?
Yeah, a various, no, it's not a majority.
Sorry. Do you, you know, does the committee feel that maybe we should amend the motion to include some form of statement summarizing officially?
I think that after approving this number, I think I would like to entertain that motion, and that will be part of the administration's presentation on July 5th, whenever that presentation is going to take place.
That's a fine way to handle it, okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mrs. Zito?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Why don't we take up the Thatcher item next? And I think it's been explained well. I think that a critical variable changed, obviously, between May 19th and today with the resignation of Mrs. Zinni. All of our buildings are unique, Thatcher probably a little bit more so. It is essentially two schools in one building. It operates 12 months a year, and I think as the administration said, having a vacuum of leadership is not really an option, and I don't think having a halftime assistant principal or acting assistant principal is an ideal option, but as is often the case, you know, sometimes it's the only option, so. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the administration related to this? Mr. Storrs?
The timeline for this position, it's a permanent position, or is this only for a certain time?
It's for one year.
It is a year.
It's an interim position for one year, in which we're looking to re-post the position next year officially.
Which we would certainly want the principal in place to, as part of that process.
Yes, do that search.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to appoint a halftime assistant principal for Thatcher Elementary School.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. If the administration could just keep us updated with regard to those processes as they play out, we would appreciate it, both with the principal and assistant principal. Thank you. Okay, so I think our final motion, I'll just make a motion to respectfully communicate to the municipal council that it is the school committee's belief that the appropriation approved for transportation services in the Attleboro School District are insufficient to meet the needs of the students of the Attleboro School District.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zito?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we'll certainly, I have, I have and I have not had a chance to circulate to the committee yet, but I did communicate via writing to President Cook last night to just essentially suggest, as I did tonight, that I was surprised with there being no questions, that I suspect I'll get some next time I'm there, but that the rhetoric that was used last night, because, you know, I think we've covered it. So, any other, we do have another agenda item, which...
Sorry, I just have a question.
Please.
Are we not addressing any of these other priorities?
I think the other priorities were encompassed in the previous presentations, the budget presentations, and because it does not exceed the scope of the total budgetary impact, I don't think that further committee action is needed.
If you have any questions, give us a call.
But yeah, certainly if there are questions, and we'd like to hear certainly about the progress that is made with regard to addressing those priorities. And frankly, as we've said over and over again, budget serves multiple purposes, and we have done, I think this budget did a great job of really identifying the objectives and the priorities and the direction that the district is moving, and so some of those things that have been technically cut, we're going to hear about, I'm sure, in the weeks, months, and years ahead, so. The last item, I just wanted to give the committee an update. I've spoken several times in this forum and to the committee about the working groups that we had talked about during our orientation that are contemplated by the basic agreement, and that the superintendent and I have had lengthy discussions about. I had at one point, I think, represented to the committee that I was leaning in the direction of wanting to appoint a variety of ad hoc committees to address a variety of issues that we have identified as goals. In talking with the superintendent, I'm now leaning more in the direction of appointing a ad hoc committee somewhat bigger in size with a diverse composition that would then be essentially broken up into a small number of working groups, all of which would essentially be bringing back ultimately recommendations to the school committee. Frankly, with the amount of time that has been consumed with the other activities, we have not moved, or I have not moved as quickly as I would like with regard to that. I circulated last week a letter that I've sent on behalf of the committee to parents of most of our students, we didn't make the kindergarten crowd, but most of our students, the families will receive a letter soliciting their involvement and participation. I've said this to the committee before, I'll say it now, I'm interested to hear your thoughts with regard to the composition of the group, and I'm interested to hear from various friends and family members that you might have that may want to participate. The primary objective of the ad hoc group is going to present options to the school committee with regard to mission statement and strategic planning. I'm anticipating that these groups will convene in late summer and do some work throughout the fall, but it's something I'll certainly be soliciting your feedback from and your comments on in the next few weeks. And so, as I've said, I'm going to try my hardest to not bring you in to this room for a few weeks to start the summer, but I would just ask that you keep an eye on your email, because I'll be interested to hear your thoughts on that. And that goes for the community as well, that letter will go out tomorrow with report cards, and we'll have information in there as to how people can volunteer. So, that's just sort of an FYI, something that we'll be picking up again in the near future. Mr. Withers?
What do you have against us, parents of kindergartners?
That's a fair question.
Be a valuable input.
I kind of consider you the liaison to the parents of kindergarten, so I thought maybe you could take on that responsibility. But we're going to figure out a way to do that, we're going to publicize it in a variety of mediums to make sure that we get the word out there that anyone that wants to be involved is certainly welcome to, and to the degree that we have excess volunteers, we're going to have plenty of things in the next year for people to do, so we're going to keep that list and keep people involved. So, thank you. Okay, before we move on to our consent agenda, we do have an announcement that came to my attention very late, that Mr. Tyler has been kind enough to share, related to an important project that is taking place on the property of a high school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring this up tonight. We just want to try to keep everybody excited about this new concession stand and how it's going to be, we're hoping it's going to be a great community project, so I will be very brief. We have set some potential timelines on this, and we're looking at either the second or third week of July to begin construction. brief. We have set some potential timelines on this, and we're looking at the second or third week of July to begin construction. There has been two masons added to the workforce, which is a very exciting part right now, because the masons are the ones who are gonna get this thing out of the ground, and they're hard to find. We ask people just to give a Saturday or a couple hours, but we, you know, we've also reached out to retired people and masons especially, and said, "You can come down there in a week, too." I guarantee you, I will take the time off personally to be a mason tender for you and mix your cement and bring you the block, so that's what we're trying to do. We only want these masons to actually lay block. We don't want them carrying blocks across the yard, we don't wanna mix and mortar, so, again, if anybody knows a mason that is willing to work on this, we're looking for a couple more, but we certainly appreciate the ones that have stepped forward.
Yeah, right here, she's...
What's that?
She's volunteering.
And that's right, I'm sorry, yes. Mrs. Zito actually is volunteered, too, but I don't know if her masonry skills are of the power as much. She's a nurse, but...
I haven't had his tools and his towel, and I would use them all that you run along the edge to, you know, grab the thing.
I see no reason not to give her a shot. I see no reason not to give her a shot at it. Just remember, Fran, it's my license that's gonna be on this. Yes, and thank you, Fran, for offering. And just a couple, there's been some very generous donations in the last week or so, too, that really we need to share with the public. We have Sean Lee Construction that basically is donating the crane that is going to do, the trust is gonna get to that season. That's a pretty generous donation, and the work is to actually set the trust. We've had from the Help Fire and Security Building, which is located in North Attleboro, they're going to actually donate and install all the fire alarm equipment for nothing. And we have from the Clem Shack Restaurant on Pleasant Street in Attleboro, they're going to have food, seafood for, on every Saturday, that there's a construction crew there. So, and BJ's has also made a promise to donate other type of food. Now, everybody likes seafood, so we're gonna try to mix it up, kept everybody fed so we can keep them there as long as we can, and they don't tire out, because carrying block is a very tiring job. Again, we wanna beg everybody out there, if you're skilled or unskilled, join this workforce. This is gonna be a great community project, and we will just keep you informed moving forward. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for adding that to the end of the agenda, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. We have our consent agenda now. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $3,000 from the Rotary Club of Attleboro to support the renovations of the Blue Pride Bistro Cafe at Attleboro High School. Discussion?
Just really looks nice, Mr. Chair, they did a great job in there, very warming and very modern.
Yes, no, it is, it is very nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation of $10,000 from Sedexo, supporting the Blue Pride Bistro Cafe. It is the Blue Pride Bistro, great, before we bring in another thing. A motion to accept a donation of $10,000 from Sedexo, supporting the Blue Pride Bistro Cafe renovations. Discussion?
Just a great, great step up by one of our vendors.
Yes, very much so, and it's a good night for the Blue Pride Bistro Cafe. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. A motion pursuant to Master in Law 53, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approval the following tangible property from the rigid tools of the plumbing program at Attleboro High School. One pipe thread are valued at $5,500. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to accept a $75 Visa gift card for supplies for both Mrs. DeChristafer's and Ms. Collette's kindergarten classes at Willa Elementary School. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes our consent agenda. Mr. Withers, policies subcommittee report?
The brief last meeting, we discussed the new residency policy that was proposed and the proof of residency requirements, so first I'd just like to request a motion to remove revised policy, JF residency policy from table for finalization.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And second, I'd like to request a motion to remove policy JF-E1, proof of residency requirements from table for finalization.
Second.
Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Withers. At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. The committee will not return in open meeting. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zito?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Meeting will take a two-minute recess, followed by the executive session.
Two minutes?
Yeah, I'll talk to you in a second.
This is what the executive session is, right?
Good job, okay, good job.
Probably are trying hard enough.
Try harder next time.
We're talking about two to three people.